The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good job. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, this is our special board meeting for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and we're gonna start. We're gonna have two different meetings tonight. We're having this special meeting and then we're gonna have our regular work session. Um, so, uh, first we're gonna start with the roll call. Kinsey. Smith? Here. Becker?
Here.
McCoy? Here. Leighton Warren? Here. Welch? Here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, um, all board members are present. Um, we're going to move on to action items. We're gonna have a number of, uh, of motions and, um, discussions and votes. Um, I'm sorry, I neglected to ask someone to go ahead and do these motions. Would you be willing to read the motions and then have somebody second them? Thank you. Go ahead.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Questions? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next we have, um, B resignation of staff.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, C retirement of staff.
I move that the retirement of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Um, next is D West High School Architecture and Engineering Services. And we're going to be hearing from, uh, Josh Patrick.
Hi, um, yes, so there are two motions coming up here, um, one for West High School. Architecture and Engineering Services and one at. East High School. This is the slate of projects at East, at each school. Um, that we had slotted in the referendum. Um, that did not involve the outdoor athletic fields, basically. So we're talking about things like auditoriums, locker rooms, um, weight rooms. Um, things like that. So the, the recommendation from administration is to award the West High School. Contracts to ATS and R and East High School to Somerville. Any questions?
Questions? James?
Josh, thanks. Please describe how you came about scoring ATS R. Under Staff Expertise Score, a twenty for this, um, proposal. And on the second that we'll hear, they scored an eighteen. Um, what was the differentiation between the two scores?
Thanks for that question. Um, Somerville has a long history of. Um, large project work at East, including the last referendum, so, um, that. We made that delineation there to, um, to account for that familiarity. Um, among. Their staff and our staff and processes and, and things like that.
So can I infer, or is there a history with ATS R at West that makes them a, a better? Expert in that facility versus Somerville or?
Um. No.
Any more questions? Andrew?
Um, thank you. Um, I, Josh, we just, we discussed, um, and emailed about. About West High, um. Is, is there? Anything? You know, if we want to get something going everywhere, is there? And I know there's some, some things that you might not think of that you told me that are dependent upon construction to remodel, perhaps the weight room falls into that category. Is there anything that we can, um, push to have, have done it at West?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be accelerating the, the talks with the engineers here. I really wanna get something happening. Um, at West that will be delivered before the, uh, beginning of the next school year. Um, I think the two projects that are. Most likely candidates would be the auditorium renovation or the weight room renovation. Now the weight room does require. Um, the construction of an addition out toward the, uh. The parking lot on the east side there. Um, but that is our, that is our goal to get something happening at West. Now the, um. The tennis courts are getting, um. Getting remodeled this, um, this spring immediately after boys. Tennis. That's not necessarily a referendum project, but we are splitting that, um, that project with the city.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay.
I move that ATS and R be awarded the bid for engineering and design services. For an estimated cost of five hundred forty thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars. Five point seven point percent of the total cost of construction as presented be approved.
Second.
Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that Somerville Architects and Engineers be awarded the bid for engineering and design services. For an estimated cost of five hundred thirty-six thousand, fifty dollars. Seven point one percent of the total cost of construction as presented be approved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding this one? Andrew?
So in, in all these cases, do you? Um. Do you assign the? Best score, like for example, a twenty and then do others based off of that or not necessarily, but sometimes you might?
Yeah, it, it depends, and these are very subjective scores, obviously. A lot of it has to do with prior experience. Um, with the firm, we do tend, unless there's good reason not to, to. Assign the, the max score to who we feel is, um. Have, has the best, um. In, in terms of that criteria. So for, um, it's. It's very clear with price of the way the price works is the low bid gets the maximum number of points available for price and then. We proportionally award points, um, based on how close each, each vendor is to the, the low bid. Similar with the, with the other categories, but a little. It's not like you can run it through a, an algorithm.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So in both of the last two bids, I saw that one was five point six percent, seven point one percent. And that's of the total cost. Is it customary to do like that?
Yeah, um, that, that's how architectural and design services are bid. They're bid as a percentage on the estimated. Total project costs. Um, and when we estimated. The cost of, the total cost of all the projects in the referendum, we included the architectural and design services. When we were trying to figure out how much everything was going to cost. Does that kinda make sense?
Yes, but then I wonder why we are paying everything upfront for sente- sentejics. Isn't that, is that a cus, is that a design service or not? Not architectural or design? It's so different that we just pay the full percent for the full project cost at the beginning.
Yeah, let's, um, we can talk about that when we get to sentejics, but so answering, um. Did you get your, your initial question answered though, as to why we do this particular?
Yes.
Category this way?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, and for these sorts of services, this is customary. It's not like a Gbaps rule. This is just kind of how they go.
Okay. It, I, I did notice that as well. I wondered why, you know, why is it done that way? So, um, okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, um. F, the purchase of sentejics and single wire. Um, I think we're going to, Vicki, did you wanna start? Oh, I'm sorry, let's go with the motion first.
I move that the purchase of sentejics and single wire as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Now, now you can go ahead, Vicki. Thank you.
Yeah, I know we've had this conversation individually, but I hadn't. Brought it to the table. What, why are we going in this direction? And the catalyst. Was a swatting incident that happened at one of our schools earlier in the year. This was something that was happening across the country. And as we do, anytime we have an incident, we debrief. And afterwards, recognized there was concern about communication. In rooms that are typically loud. Uh, physical education, music rooms, tech education rooms. And it was requested by school staff that we do a better job, that we take a look at what, what's out there to help improve upon this. They were asking for a solution. Josh and his team found one. And that's, uh, the reason why we're bringing this forward. And be glad to answer any further questions that the board might have. Let me see, uh, Mr. Coller is here as well, if we have specific questions about safety.
Okay, yes, come and join us at the table. Okay, so, um, we've got a motion and a second. Let, um. Vicki's kind of acquainted us with the why, the driving, um, the kind of the driving circumstances that. Made this, um, a need in our district. Um, any questions, any discussion? Go ahead.
Three weeks ago, we delayed the motion to purchase the sentejic security system. Since that time, there has been a lot of conversation about sentejics and I appreciate that. But personally, I would continue to pump the brakes a bit on entering into a contract at this time. The task force will be finishing up in April, May. With their recommendations for addressing the twenty twenty-four budget shortfall. At the last task force meeting, the number of possible school closings varied quite a bit from one scenario to another. The cost of the system is over forty thousand dollars per school. Therefore, I continue to feel we have very little to lose by seeking competitive bids. To determine the best products, features, costs and contract terms. For our school district as we wait for the task force recommendations. The district is assuming an increased risk with prepayment and a five-year contract term. And that's why I asked that other question about, you know, the seven point one or the five point six. Therefore, a full credit review, including pulling credit reports should be completed.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, um. Regarding the specific question, it, as, um. You related in the previous motion, there is an advantage to prepaying. Um, which is a, a savings of the implementation of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um. That is, that's the, that's the trade-off for, for prepaying. We get, we get a discount.
I'm sorry, say that we would save a hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we prepay. Is that what you just said?
Yeah, there are discounts built into this quote of, um, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of saving. Savings with a, uh, with a five-year term here.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
And we're using Essar dollars to pay for this?
These are operational, um. General fund.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um. So I, I understand and it's, it's not. It's not very intuitive because I, I don't think anyone would. I don't think this system should ever have been made the way it is, but you, you get. Districts that essentially districts that spend too much, you can get punished by the state formula and districts that save. Can get punished for the state formula. So the unfortunate nature is we, we couldn't. And correct me if I'm wrong, we, we, if we took, if we said, let's pump the brakes and save the one point eight and see how bad the budget shortfall is. We would actually forfeit some state aid for that, correct?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for bringing that up because this is something I think the board is going to see a couple of times coming up to the end of the fiscal year here. Um, so we are looking at that budget shortfall in two years and we've been taking steps to reduce ongoing costs. Um. That we've been, we've been doing that for over a year at this point. Um, as a result, we end up with savings within the current budget year. Right? Cause we, you can't do it all, you can't do it all at once. It would be great if we could just flip a switch. In twenty-four, twenty-five, but that's not how it works. So there are, um, you know, previously obligated, uh, budget. Monies. Available, um, and you're absolutely right, Andrew. Um, you do get punished if you don't. If you don't spend it. So if we were to put it into fund balance, for example. Um, we would not be aided on that money and we're aided at about sixty cents on the dollar. Um, it does not affect our revenue limit, but that has the effect of pushing up property taxes locally. So, um. The, the levy would go up, the, um. The tax rate may go up, but we're, we've got probably enough debt to, um. To keep that mill rate stable, but the, the property tax levy would go up.
Uh, so just to, to follow up on that, then the, um. So that, and that's, it's very, it's very unfortunate and it, and for those who, you know, would say this eps, what are you talking about? This doesn't make any sense. It, it doesn't make any sense. Uh, you should get your. And I, I, I mean, yeah, it doesn't make any sense. You have, uh. So you're penalized if you save it. So we can't, we can't do that. That being said. I guess one other. It, I, actually I do have two other questions. Uh, one is. As far as the, um, badges and badge and strobe system, uh, could you just discuss why this might have been done? You know, is there, was there a discussion about could there be a? More use or more need for this in our biggest buildings and? Just stick with, uh, methods of communication we have already in, in elementaries that would be, you know, reduce the cost of this and the other. Um. Uh, I guess I'll just go to that one first.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something we've talked about and that may be a strategy for, for the renewal as I, I discuss. So if we get down, um. Five years down the road and, and perhaps there aren't operational monies available for a full renewal. We can take a look at maybe just doing our, our largest schools. I will say, um, that the company, um. Has stated, um, and it was corroborated by a, a reference check I did. Um, on Friday afternoon with the, um. The first sentejics company, customer in the state of Kansas, Alatta, Kansas. They're about. Thirty thousand students, about sixty-five sites. Um, the majority of the usage for the staff alert, so the, the non-urgent. I just need some help here, is at the elementary level. Um. There is actually very little usage of those features at the secondary level, um, comparatively speaking. But of course, uh, you know, it gets reversed when you start talking about, um. So having to secure buildings and, and things like that. That's more likely to happen at, uh. At larger schools with older kids.
Okay, this has to do with the funding. Um, I thought it was Essar funds now, but then. After five years, it went to the operational. Did I get that wrong?
Our intention is to expense it out of our operational budget this year, not as, not Essar. So we, we wanna. Save some of that Essar to, to plug holes as, as we need it, right? And. Uh, again, as we're realizing savings with these other budget cuts, that does free up some money in the operational budget.
But I. In my notes, that it was Essar funds.
I think the original posting at the work session may have said Essar.
Well, Essar, Essar funds makes this possible, right? Because we have that one-time money to fill. Our budget deficit. This, does, do I understand?
In a roundabout way, yes.
Yeah, in a roundabout way. Um, that makes it possible to do this. Um, it's deeply complicated and multi-layered and we've all learned a lot in the last couple of weeks about. The complexities of school funding, which is an ongoing process for me.
You're gonna learn a lot more later tonight with Andrew's presentation.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I appreciate how this board has shown patience to each other as we all get our. Get to the point in our own time and, um. And staff has been very supportive over the last couple of weeks explaining this, sometimes repeatedly. I know I need multiple. Multiple explanations sometimes to fully grasp why we can do this now and why that money is there. So are there any other questions? Oh, so go ahead, Brian. Sorry. Oh, sorry.
Um, in regards to the, the data part of the program, um, it'll geolocate where the clicks are happening. And I assume that that's going to be presented and will be able to be presented in some reports. So. If staff was looking at, we have more of a situation happening and on. From ten thirty to ten forty-five in a certain area, that could also help as far as student support staff or supervision or other concerns with that. Um. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's correct. So you would be able to give timestamps, locations on, on each of the incidents. And then also after each incident, the, the staff member is sent a, a quick survey. Um, to, to elaborate on the resolution. I know you were very interested in the response time aspect. There's not like a. A timer that an admin hits when they get there, but. But yeah, but after the fact, um. You know, the, the teacher or whoever activates the, the badge has the opportunity to say. Yeah, you know what? No one came or yeah, you know, help came right away.
Go ahead.
Are we able to customize that survey response? So if it was a question of, um. Giving like five categories as to why the, this, the responses requested on that, um, whether it was a student behavior or, you know, just. Generic terms on there. Do you know if we'd be able to customize that? And is that something that would be available on a building level for principal and staff members? As well as a district level?
Answering your second question first, yes, I know it is available at the building level in addition to the district level. I do not know the answer, um, to whether that survey is customizable. I believe that it is, but I won't be able to. Answer that for sure. I can, I can find out that answer for you.
And I didn't mean to spring that on you. That just kinda popped up with it. Thank you.
I have a question, actually, maybe, um, Chris, I know you've been. Part of this from the beginning, um. Maybe you could answer this question. I'm very interested in what this system is going to offer us in terms of data. And how in the future we'll be able to, um. Learn things from that data as to response times. And I don't know, do you have anything to add with regard to what we can do with that data to the benefit of our schools and our teachers?
I think the benefit we're gonna have is there's, there's gonna be a lot of ways that we can interpret the data. We're gonna be able to look at, like what they were talking about, you know, if there's specific areas of the school where things are happening, specific timeframes where things are happening. Also, specific buildings where things are happening, where we'd be able to look and, and realize that if a principal's asking for more support, we can show, uh, that. It is needed and, and the reasons why, um. That's just on the piece of the, the equipment where you're, the, the staff are using it for assistance. On the other end of it, the data that we're, we're gonna gather relating to, uh, whether it be drills or actual situations where we have to secure our buildings or. Um, you know, for other events, it's gonna give us the ability, uh, to understand. You know, within our buildings, how is the information being received? Are people getting it quickly? Are they able to, um, know what's happening fast? Or do they recognize, you know, with the system having, uh, the, the ability to customize the messaging and the strobes to how we want it to, to look in the building? How can we take that information on, on a per-building level and make sure that, um, it's, it's being effective in getting? The message out to our staff and students as quickly as possible. Um. I think that's a key piece of this that I, I really look to is that, uh, right now, the way we're doing things using, you know, P A systems and messages over, you know, email. Um, it's probably much slower than what this is gonna be. Once we activate the system. There's gonna be pre-recorded messages that explain exactly what's happening. Uh, the lights that are gonna be coming on are gonna be recognizable as we train our staff and our students what they mean. And, and you know, they're gonna be in spaces that we don't have now. We're gonna be in, in the gyms, acquire rooms, bathrooms, areas where. Right now, we don't have the ability always to hear or what's happening. Um, and I think it's gonna make it so that. You know, if, and, and this is probably a possibility as well. After we run our drills, it seems that the, the, the product is very customizable. If we're sending a survey to a staff member that activated for a badge, we could send surveys to our staff after a drill, which is something that we ask our principals to know. And find out what went well, what didn't go well, what can we fix, how can we improve it? And, you know, using this system to get the information as quickly as possible. That we need to secure a building or that there's something going on. Followed up by that real-time information, I think is really gonna put our staff at ease as far as knowing that in an emergency, they're gonna get the information quickly.
So speed of response, I, I, I mean, as you were talking, I'm thinking this is all about response time. And, and how we can effectively help. Staff or students in a medical crisis or all kinds of scenarios where this could be extraordinarily helpful. But that speed of response is what, what I feel like this is a critical thing with the system and, um. And I, that's just my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Josh.
The, the survey can be customized as well as the close reasons. Um, I did just get word for that. Um, I do also want to. I wa, I wanna make sure, I know that everyone here knows that, but for those that may be watching, um, remotely. The system really does have two different uses. You've got the use where you're doing, you know, we just had a situ. Situation today where there was a, there was, um, an armed person going through our neighborhoods and we had to. Um, restrict access to a couple of our elementary schools, right? So the system is, is really good for that. Um, restrict access to a couple of our elementary schools, right? So the system is is really good for that. Then you have that staff alert system which. Does not always indicate um an emergency, right? Um, but. If you talk to teachers, um. Especially since the pandemic about the behaviors um in our schools, they are they are really um. Asking for additional support, and I I think that was one thing that was appealing about this system was not only does it fill the hole. Um, in terms of the strobes and and things like that, but it offers this additional support that staff have been asking for.
Go ahead, James.
Chris, can you remind us of your role?
Yes, I'm the safety and security manager.
And in that role, um you've been involved since the beginning. Uh, I know and I appreciate members of the board. Wanting to kind of slow and make sure that we spend funds wisely, but would you? In your opinion, um recommend that we look for alternatives, or do you feel that? In preparing this proposal, uh alternatives were evaluated appropriately and. Whether for goodness of fit for the scenario or other reasons, we've ended up where we are in in good faith.
Yes, I I do feel that we have looked at alternatives. We've um looked at several recently since uh this has been tabled, and we've found that. Although a lot of them offer similar. Things, it's not the same, and it's not gonna be something that we can implement as quickly as we can with this product. A lot of the uh other products that are are have been brought to us require. Devices and electronic equipment being wired in the in the building, which is gonna take twice as long, if not longer, to get into place along with additional costs. Um, I do feel that having been part of this, not only in this for this year, but this is a product that we had looked at previously and. Um, I've been a part of some uh school safety conferences where they've been presenting at um and looking at. What it offers, uh as soon as I heard about it, I I knew that this was something that, you know, if given the opportunity, could be very helpful to. Our staff and our students.
Just um. Can you refresh our memory? You, I think you had a number, it's probably an approximate number of. How many places around the country this has been implemented and some of the feedback that these places can offer? Um, with how effective this has been.
Yeah, they, I mean, they're in. Literally thousands of buildings ac- across the country. Um. You know, primarily in the southeast to this point, their home um their home base is in Atlanta, Georgia. Um. For for those of you that aren't familiar with the school systems down in that part of the country, those are county school systems. So when you're in a school system in Florida, you're you're talking a hundred, hundred fifty thousand. Students, hundreds of schools. Um, so similar story. In Georgia, those are those are very, those are county-based systems. Um, they're also in a a couple of hospitals and in in things like that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Brian?
I know that, you know, we we were looking at the price for this with forty-two buildings, and I was just curious um. Whilst comparing Apple Store, which is a bit, we recently approved one. Uh, fire alarm system, correct? And I'm just trying to remember the cost for that, I believe it was for one of the high schools.
Yeah, that was seven hundred. Oh, boy, seven hundred twenty-five thousand for East High School, I think.
I assume you're offering that as a comparison. Yeah, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, dude, were we able to, were we able to secure anything as far as? Preferable out clauses or terms, which we've successfully done with with some other. Things we've gone into before.
Melissa has reviewed the agreement. And I'm assuming as I'm not in the legal department, I'm assuming as part of the review, she always uh she always reviews. The the right to terminate um a contract. Nice ears, not in her head. Yes, we have uh good terms on on uh termination.
Are you finished?
Like, how how, I mean, this is, I mean, unless unless this is interfering with a. Contract that negotiations have to be finalized on or something, in which case it would be disadvantageous to. Say anything about it, which I would respect, uh because I wouldn't wanna interfere with that, but. We've certainly had times where our legal department has gotten us very favorable terms, uh places much. We have. We have, we have. Set the terms of contracts for people bigger than bigger than this before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking a question. Are we, did we, were we, did we? You know, fight for some better better terms than just what comes out of the box? Okay, those and okay.
Okay, go ahead, James.
Specifically, were there any clauses that allowed us to claw back any of the funds, given that we end up. Shutting down schools where there's an implementation?
So I'm sorry, is your question is, is that in writing?
Well, I would hope that eh before we go into, because to to Nancy's concern, right, we're going through a master uh planning uh. Activity, and in the event that the there is not coordination. Between the install and the decision to um to eh um close down a school. Right? What is the risk or liability to the district?
I I see your question, so um they will be. They will be giving us pro-rated credit toward um a renewal for any. Any schools that don't make it through the five-year term, if if there were to be have, if we were to have any schools closed down in these five years.
Okay.
Can I, can I add one more thing just about the procurement process? Because this is a little bit. Software is a little bit weird um to procure because it's not, it's not a widget. Right? It's not like, you you know, you'll hear Justin later to- tonight um talk about refreshing our business and tech head labs. There we put out a very specific spec. We have five or six companies bid us the exact thing that we're looking for, and we basically just take the low price with. Software, each product is so unique, you really do have to evaluate it on its own merit. Um. And so typically with software, we do procure under um. So our sole source policy, um which is what we're proposing here. Um, and there are two ways that this. Qualifies for sole source. One is the uniqueness of the of the features. Um, and the second is that um they do have a CISA contract. Now, we're not procuring under the CISA contract because the price we're getting. Is actually lower than. The, you're gonna go to negotiated uh contracted price through CISA.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
If you're comfortable with it, could you elaborate more on the CISA contract? Like, are they planning other districts in this area or just elaborated a little bit on that?
So they have a contract with C- CISA purchasing that guarantees um any district in the state of Wisconsin, a a pre-negotiated rate. On their services. Now, we would be the first. In Wisconsin, which is one of the reasons I believe they're being so aggressive with their pricing um with us. Um, as I talked with Alatha. Um, down in Kansas, they were the first one down in Kansas, and now. A whole bunch of their neighbors are are picking the same system up.
I guess my my conclusion here, I just wanna make it clear with regards to my. Vote, I've said for years that I have kind of a. Standard that I have to be eighty-five percent comfortable with with something to be able to to do it. It's gotta be way more than fifty. And that's just kind of where I land. Um, I. You know, I didn't hear, I I haven't had much in the way of feedback either either way on this. People aren't. Um, blowing up the phones to not do it. People aren't blowing up the phones to to do it. Um, in the end, I think, looking at the. Looking at the staff recommendation and the the unfortunate situation that we're forced into that you can't. Add to your rainy day fund without being punished. Uh, I'm I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I wanted to not, you know, it was. Took a lot of thought, and it's not just a slam dunk for me. It's it's close to that. Bubble for me, and I am sure we might be looking at a whole, I this would have probably evolved differently if we were able to set. Money aside for the the budget shortfall year, but we can't, so.
Okay, um, if there's no more question and no other questions, um, I think we're ready to take a vote. Kenzie? Online voting is now open. Andrew, do you wanna? Do you wanna vote verbally, Andrew? Sorry, I think everybody's gonna have to re-vote. Okay. Can you vote, Andrew?
Um, I'll I'll verbally vote yes, it's still loading for me.
All votes have been entered and the motion has carried six to one. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, no. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes. Okay, thank you. And thank you, guys. I know you've done a lot of work on this, and I I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we'll be back um to the board in about six months with the report on how it's going.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn um this special board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Only favor? I, okay, we're going to adjourn and go directly into um. Our our uh work session, but it will take us a couple of minutes to um to get into that, so. Sure, let's take, let's take a five-minute break while we get the meeting up, the next one up and going. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready, Kenzie. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is our um Board of Education work session for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let's see, we're going to start with the roll call. Kenzie? Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch? Here. Leighton and Warren? Here. McCoy, here. Becker?
Here.
Smith? Here. Okay, all um board members are present. Um, we are also joined at the table by two ICSC. Students, um, would you please inter- introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Macy Saha. I go to Prebble, and I'm a senior, and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
I was eating one of the cookies, they're really good. My name is Jennifer Duarte Castillo. I'm a junior at Green Bay East High School, and I'm a member of the ICSC.
Thank you, welcome. Unfortunately, we all had, we just coming back from a break where every, most of us start started eating uh Valentine's Day cookies, so just. Bear with us here. Yeah, so anyway, welcome, everybody. Um, the first thing on our agenda is, let's see here. Open forum. And uh we have one, one person. Who would like to speak, um, Mr. Dennis Kostak? Please, um, please uh state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
Uh, Dennis is not. Dennis Kostak, twenty-seven eighty Yorktown Drive, Green Bay. And um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the board on the passing the referendum. I think it's pretty awesome. I know you put a lot of work into it. There's a lot of work ahead of you, but it it's awesome. Um, I've spent fifty-one years in education, uh lived in Green Bay for. Forty-nine years, I taught at Western Pier High School Math, retired fifteen years ago. I've been involved in teaching college, uh secondary methods classes, math classes. I've supervised student teachers, uh I've taught online. I've been a math coach in three different districts since I retired. I worked at CISA seven for quite a while, and I spent three years as their math coordinator. So I've been immersed in education for a long time. I really feel that uh it's been my life. Last night, we were watching the Super Bowl. We had a couple over with us, and I don't know if you remember, if you watched the game, there was a play where. Philadelphia threw a pass, and the guy knocked it out of his hands, and the Kansas City guy picked it up and ran it in for a touchdown. My wife had gotten a text message from a a friend, and the three of us were yelling, and she said, what happened? What happened? She was reading the text message and obviously didn't see it. We could press rewind button and go back twenty seconds and see the play and everything. Worked great. Um, you ever sit and watching TV show or a movie and uh. You're looking at your phone, maybe playing Solitaire, or you get a message or a phone call. And uh you look back at the movie, what happened the last minute? Again, you can rewind it, find out what happened, or you can pause it when you get your phone call. That doesn't happen in the classroom. It just doesn't. The three main concerns that I have as a sub-teacher and my observations as observing student teachers and whatever. Is electronics in the classroom, primarily cell phones, earbuds. And the computers, and I see everybody on in the room here has a computer in front of them. That's great. Every kid in the Green Bay District, and I'm talking primarily middle and high school, has computers. And the problems I'm talking about mostly are in the high school level. And I'm here for two reasons. My primary reason is I care. I've been an educator for fifty-one years, and I care. Secondly, a smaller reason, maybe I have a home in the Southwest District. My kids went to school there. In about ten years, we're probably gonna sell that house. I want people to buy my home. I've got a four-bedroom home, beautiful home for a family with kids. I have four examples of what I saw subbing, and I've got many, many more, but. I think these poor will kind of tell you a little bit about what's going on. I was a library librarian one day. I had an aide that did all the work, but I sat and kind of did what I was supposed to. I observed one hundred and four kids coming through the library. During the course of the day, five were working on schoolwork, five out of a hundred and four. I walked by the study hall across the way. Same thing, hardly anybody working on schoolwork. I was in a classroom as a special ed teacher, observing. Twenty-four students in a math class, not one was paying attention. They were either on their phones, reading a book, playing on their computers, or doing some other work. At the end of a lecture, the teacher came up to me and said, isn't this something? My thought was, why in the world don't you do something about it? I was in a um math class, again observing. Teacher gave a great lecture on a topic. Laid it out perfectly. There was one, quite a few kids that weren't paying attention, but one in particular caught my eye. I could see the earbuds in his long hair and his hoodie. Touching his phone, obviously listening to music. The PowerPoint was up here, and the kid was staring off in the other direction. He didn't hear one word, the teacher said. At the end of the lesson, she gave him some time to work, and I walked around to try to help students. He said, I don't get this. I don't know how to do any of this. Gee, I wonder why. I wonder why. I was at another school, and often I read your board policy. I know you have a policy. and often I read your board policy. I know you have a policy. I've read it to the kids. And I read it out one day and the kids were supposed to take a quiz and there was one girl in particular. I had to remind her three times to put her phone away. She didn't. I took it away from her, put it on the desk. Class ended about fifteen minutes later, some, I think it was the guidance counselor came in and said, I need the phone back. Said, that's not the policy. The policy's right here in the sub guidelines. I bring it to the office, they come and get it at the end of the day or the parents come and get it. He said, no, no, that's not the policy. So I gave it back. The next day, I got a an email from the principal telling me that I was too hard on the kids, that this girl was actually in the bathroom crying because I took her phone away. Work time? They give kids cooperative work time? They're sitting, the four of them, two of them got earbuds in listening to music. It's it's just crazy. Perhaps some of you recognize me because I've uh I'm a sports official. I've been on the Green Bay hard courts, baseball diamonds, softball diamonds, volleyball courts. I've never once seen a kid with a cellphone while they're taking infield. I've never once seen a person with a cellphone during the school musical or a concert. Those are extensions of the classroom. They're adhered to there. Why aren't they otherwise? I've got a suggestion. Study halls, from what I observed, are a waste of time. And I know the two girls here have observed it, I'm sure. I've been to Preble, I've been to West, I've been to East, I've been to Southwest, I've done long-term, short-term. The school in Green Bay that has the most success on the report cards, and I'm sure you're all aware of the report cards, is Green Bay East. Five-period day. When I taught at West Pier, we had a five-period day. We had an eight-period day with a zero hour and everything like that. The best kids were taking all the classes. They were so overwhelmed, it was unbelievable. The, I don't wanna call them I don't know what to call them, but the kids that didn't work so hard maybe, took four classes and had all this free time. When you go to the five-period day, the kids are in class all the time. They're with a teacher for seventy minutes. That teacher can control the kids, give them their work time, their help time and all that kind of thing. I've talked to teachers, I've talked to principals, they say, oh, the union's against it. The union doesn't want five-period days. Let me tell you. Teachers that go to a five-period day love it. They have seventy minutes to work with their kids and do what they have to do. It's something I strongly consider because then they won't be wasting time in study halls. They won't be playing with their phones because they're in the classroom. I think that the fact that you have all this money going to your buildings and your facilities is great. Put some money into working with your teachers, into how to do classroom management. How to get these cell phones put away, how to get the earbuds out of the kids. It really can work. Simple fix. It's really a simple fix. Your teachers need your support so that they can teach the kids without these distractions. And I know I'm only a sub. And I know I've talked to other subs. I've talked to teachers in other districts. Some of the other districts don't have these problems. They just don't have them. The kids aren't allowed to have their cell phones in the classroom. But it's happening in Green Bay and I don't know. It it it's just a shame to me. And um, like I said, I know you have the policy and I know the principals have a lot to do and I know they're gonna be mad at me for saying they're not doing their job. But believe me, something's gotta be done. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Uh, we're not allowed to ask questions, I'm sorry, but um I wanted to thank you for coming and and um letting us know your thoughts on this subject.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda falls under education, um and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Thank you. All right, um, we'll start first with uh course essential documents for twenty twenty-three curriculum updates.
Thank you very much. Um, this is a time of year that um a month ago, we were here and we went through the curriculum cycle. So this is stage three and also stage four. So stage three is your resource adoption, stage four is your implementation and monitoring. Uh, joining me at the table tonight is Dr. Eric Khan. He'll be going through all of the course updates. And then also, um, he's the Associate Director of Teaching and Learning and then Miss Angela Combe, who is the Director of Curriculum. So I'm gonna turn it over to Eric.
Good evening. You should turn the microphone on first. Uh, good evening. Uh, so the first piece tonight, uh, we have the updated curriculum documents that we're presenting to you this evening. Um, these reflect the course changes that uh were approved by the board uh during our coursebook update uh back in September. Uh, what you'll notice is many of the changes reflect our continuing efforts to provide students opportunities for college and career readiness. Without going into all uh uh every individual change, um you will note that there are additional opportunities for students to earn college credit or an industry certification. Um, for a majority of the courses listed, we are proposing to uh add dual credit to an existing course or replace a current course with a dual credit or advanced placement option. Additionally, we are proposing to add an industry certification to our Computer Essentials course, which will increase certification access for a larger proportion of students. Um, additionally, some courses have been updated to align to with uh align with revised state academic standards. And then for the courses listed in the first two sections of our memo, uh the resources requested for approval for these new and updated courses are either the resources used by the colleges or the ones that were identified as supporting the industry certifications. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions on these changes.
Okay, questions? Brian?
I have a question regards to um certification and I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it, if I need to go to Vicky with it. Um, the state still reimburses for some certification in certain fields, correct? Yes, um and that's one piece that we wanted to make sure we highlighted in our, in the board memo is the proposed certification, the uh internet core computing through CertiPort is on the list for the technical incentive grant, which means that um the grant uh reimburses districts for every graduate who earns a certification. So it doesn't matter how many they earn, but that graduate counts and this fits into that category.
And that would be the other certifications as well with uh also with the trades and just the different, like the CNA program, I believe, has it, so it's the same umbrella that would fall under.
Yep, the exact same umbrella.
Okay, other questions? All right, uh, we will move that forward um for the the vote in two weeks and then um next we have curriculum update, uh high school math resource adoption.
Thanks so much for having us here tonight. Um, we're really excited to um be able to be here. I'm joined tonight um by Heather Vandevier, a teacher at Lombardi Middle School, who's currently using the proposed materials with her Algebra One classes and Cindy Cantwell, who is a curriculum coordinator and teaching and learning. We're requesting the approval of the high school resource Open Up. We believe this resource is needed to increase high school student achievement. Our current district report card indicates that students are not proficient in mathematics. The average percent of students that scored basic or below basic at our four high schools is eighty-two percent. Only thirteen percent of students that took the ACT meant the benchmark of twenty-two and currently less than twenty percent of students are meeting our interim assessment benchmarks within the district. All of these data points indicate a need for change for our students. Our belief is that Open Up Resources for Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two will increase student achievement by offering students the opportunity to take control of their learning, be flexible with their thinking and understand the conceptual math behind the procedures they will be using to solve real-world problems. This is a significant change, but it's consistent with the expectations called out in the updated Wisconsin State Standards, which are based on national recommendations for math teaching and learning. Green Bay Public um Schools Elementary and Middle Schools have already made this critical shift in mathematics teaching and learning with our recent math adoptions. When I visit elementary and middle school classrooms, I see students working collaboratively, asking questions and solving problems using a variety of strategies. And while we still have work to be done, our elementary schools currently have an average of sixty-four percent of students in the basic or below basic levels, which is still significantly less than our high school averages. We believe that the Open Up Resource at the high school level will offer students in Green Bay schools the full opportunity to de- develop strong, flexible math skills that they will be able to use well beyond their time in Green Bay schools. To come to this conclusion, we used a rigorous selection process that included many key stakeholders. Teachers were provided with full access to the top two resources for three weeks. After a vendor meeting, teachers, billing administrators, district leaders and curriculum coordinators provided feedback that indicated Open Up would support our student and teacher needs. We are currently running a trial of the resource in order to gain more information that would help us to ensure strong implementation in the future. So our request, um, on behalf of our teachers and our students is for approval to adopt the Open Up Resource for Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. What questions do you have for us?
Angie, can you talk about the difference between pilot and trial?
Yeah, so.
I was in here when they were using the little thing in the middle where you didn't have to touch the button. Um, yeah, so we uh we use a trial and one of the reasons that we, we believe that we um have found the best resources possible to bring to our students. And so we use the trial as an opportunity to work out any kinks that there are so that when we move to implementation, we are able to navigate any of those barriers that there might be, including supporting teachers or students in ways that we may not have seen without having the trial.
Uh, Brian?
Fred, you had this one, Andrew. Um, could you, so I've received an email or two with concern about the change in the math curriculum and you had mentioned that there'd be a significant shift. And actually, I'm gonna kind of ask Heather if she could elaborate a little bit on that, being a classroom teacher with it um in relation to the middle school and any concerns that you may have heard from any high school teachers regarding the um change with the math curriculum on it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, if I could just add one piece and that is that that we do acknowledge, I've been in a a lot of classrooms, Cindy's been in um probably nearly every classroom that is um in the trial right now. And we acknowledge that there are going to be challenges, um just like any new implementation. Um, we have um specifically added a robust professional learning um experience for our teachers um from the company over a three-year period of time so that they're able to get the support that they need to be able to make um this type of a shift in teaching. Um, Cindy, do you wanna share uh some of the major shifts that? Okay.
Um, this gives us a unique opportunity with the work session that we can ask, ask the questions for the other board members. So if you can just also, while you're addressing that, be upfront with, and I'm positive you will be, just the specific challenges that you may have heard from high school or middle school teachers on that. So the whole board hears the same part of it. So if we get those concerns, we can give that information out.
Yeah, absolutely. So Cindy, I was hoping that you could share the shifts um from the state standards that would address um the first portion of the question. Um, and then go ahead and and feel free to share the observations and feedback that you've gotten.
Oh. There we go. Thank you. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, the Wisconsin uh DPI updated the math standards for K twelve. And there were five shifts that um really were called out and had a big change in how Wisconsin viewed mathematics. The first one is learning mathematics emphasizes recognizing, valuing and fostering mathematical identities, identities and agency in all students. The second one, and these are all available with great explanations on the um DPI website. It's an appendix of the state standards, twenty twenty-one state standards, appendix three. Um, all students are flexible users of mathematics who see how mathematics can be used to understand their world and the world around them. Um, shift three, all students engage in mathematics that is focused on developing deep understanding of and connections among mathematical concepts in order to gain strong foundation to move their mathematics learning forward. Shift four, all students engage in coherent mathematics that connects concepts and mathematical thinking within and across domains and grades. And lastly, shift five. All students engage in rigorous mathematics focused with equal intensity on developing conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, efficiency and application to authentic contexts. So those shifts really um describe a different philosophy in understanding mathematics. Um, and so it, the challenges is trying to find something as teachers um had expressed in um in speaking with them and and a survey that we did pre-trial. They had expressed that there was, their concerns were poor student engagement. Um, sometimes students inability to make those connections across grade levels, across units um and transfer that knowledge and students taking ownership and responsibility for some of that. And those pieces kind of led us to really exploring these top-rated resources that have these instructional shifts embedded in them as well as that conceptual understanding and all of those things. So discourse, student discourse, student um really exploring deeply problems before the teacher um really kind of activating that background knowledge. So there's something, some foundation to hold on to with that um exploration of the problems before the teacher just tells students how to do it. So it's discussion. It is reading more about mathematics, writing more about mathematics. Um, learning from different mathematical situations and then more teacher as facilitator as opposed to stay sage on the stage and helping synthesize those student ideas and build that understanding and then practicing and digging in.
One, I think one, one key observation I had um from a Algebra Two classroom um was that um when I go in, my purpose really is to talk to the students and to be able to talk to the teacher and and see how things are going. And so I had asked a table of students, um, how are things going? Um, and and the students said, oh, not so good. Um, this, this is hard. Um, I just, I wanna go back to how we were learning before. And so I said, well, tell me about that. How how were you learning before? And she said, well, I want the teacher to tell me the steps and then I'll do a problem and use those steps to do that problem. It's a lot easier that way. And I said, well, tell me about like how you're learning now, what's making it more challenging now? And she said, I don't know, it's just um, it takes a lot more brain power to do this. So those are the challenges that came out from the student survey. Um, the, there, and I would say, we, for as many um challenges that were in the survey, there were equally as many, we want to do this. Um, Cindy can share more specifics and I think it'd be important for um you to speak a little bit from your classroom experience as well. Um, but the challenges are being able to um encourage student discussion from the teacher's side. So how do I get that student discussion happening? Um, what happens when students are frustrated? Because I have students in my class who are frustrated by this type of learning. Um, and and then on the student's side, it's, I'm used to taking notes and that's what I'm, I'm used to and I want to be able to to do it that way versus having to try and figure things out so much. Um, for, when I read through the data, I see that, that's it. That's expected. You know, we saw fourth and fifth grade teachers during the Bridge, Bridges implementation saying similar things that students hadn't had that type of learning before. And so the fourth and fifth grade teachers had to start fresh and had to have that type of um learning. Versus now, when I'm in sixth grade classrooms, that's what students are doing. They they are given a problem and they start to stra- they start to strategize together and have all of this math talk. Unfortunately, our high school students to this point haven't had that experience. Um and so we we are hope hoping to have a a resource that we will be able to do that now. Or whoever.
Um sure. So looking at the the progression from seeing the sixth and seventh graders doing this from fourth and fifth grade bridges coming forward. And not using COVID as an excuse, but recognizing that gap in space, you know, and instruction is going to continue to progress on until. You know, everything catches up on it. Do you feel that, you know, I'm I'm getting concerned from high school teachers on this, and I shouldn't say teachers, I've had a a couple emails on it. Do you feel that that gap, that there'd be potentially it catching up? From progress from the bridges from the fourth and fifth graders that are now in sixth grade. And kind of working their way through. And I'm kind of looking at Heather for an answer on this as well from what she's seen and how this relates to. Different math classes from, I don't want to use phrase accelerated, but if we have different math learners in there. How we're hitting all different types of learners with it.
Yeah, absolutely. And so Heather is the perfect example for this because she is in the middle school setting. So.
Hi, Heather Vanny Barber at LaMarty Middle School. I teach seventh grade and the algebra le- um advanced algebra at LaMarty. Um yes, I see that chunk, that that ripple of what kids have missed when we shut down. April thir- no, March thirteenth, twenty twenty. I remember date right before spring break. Um. And yep, you can see that. So last year's group was um proportional relationships. You could tell that they missed that equivalency. And now this particular group, it's fraction work. Because when do you get most of your fraction work? Oh, fifth grade. And what was our current? Um uh current seventh graders doing in fifth grade? Um probably at home watching Netflix, right? Um so yeah, we see that chunk. And as we go through, right, it's a different ripple that's missing every single year that goes through. Um but now with um the mid-school math that we are implementing in middle school. I can see that they've had that discourse, those those tasks to do where they had to figure something out, use what they already know. To talk about, bring in, talk with other mathematicians, explain their thinking, and that they can do that. Yes, some kids don't want to talk. It is what it is. But you're also getting kids that would have been a fly on the wall that they just want to get under the radar. Now they have to speak up, or now they have something better and they want to share. They have that opportunity. Um and now I see that now in my algebra. Now they're given a chance that, okay. Go figure it out. And yep, I had one or two. Bring me the packet. Miss, Miss Yew, what do I do? I don't know. Let's look at this question. What do you think that means that? You have a budget limit? Like, what do you think that means? Well, I can't spend money. I don't have. Yeah, I can't do that either. So what should we do next? And just having those questioning techniques or having those opportunities for kids to think about. And interpret their, because right now we're doing systems. My favorite unit. Oh, I love it. It's so much fun. Please come visit. I love systems. Um system equation, systems of inequalities. And I, it's fun, right? You get to do the math, do the algebra, and your page looks like a hot mess, but you got an answer. But now. Kids actually get to interpret and figure out what does that mean on the real world and bring it in and see that, oh. It means something. It's just not an ordered pair on the bottom of my page. It means that, oh, I can get a certain amount of stuff. And within my budget or within my space of the um the business that their task is creating. Um there are some definitely some kids that that my old way, right? Take our notes, do some practice activities, and here's your homework. Yeah, they did okay, because they're they're accelerated, they're advanced kids in eighth grade. They did okay, but now those same fights kids that were flying under the radar, they're the ones that are speaking out. They're the ones that right away hands are raised, ready to talk.
Let my other board members speak too. So following that, I'll just call it like the exploration where they're digging deep into it. That that wave is coming up to the high school now. So my concern is. Changing horses midstream on it. If we're, if we're catching up for it with. The bridges model that we've used in the elementary school and then follow catching up in middle school that they have those explorations. Yeah, I'm just gonna call it the exploration techniques or, you know, to really dig into the math problems on it. Are we risking anything by now switching midstream to something else for the high school? Are we catching the end of that wave of? We're we're making the progress on there. And and I'm guessing that's, having not spoken to the teachers on this, I'm guessing that may be the concern. With the high school teachers, and I still haven't really heard the concerns addressed that you've heard from the high schoolers, and I haven't had a chance to speak with. The teachers on this. What are the concerns from the high school teachers regarding this?
Um I I can read some of the responses. Um let me scroll to where I have those. Um some of the concerns are some students are struggling with the synthesizing of getting all their ideas together. Um and some are not getting the big ideas. Um do you want me to just read them fully or do you want me to respond? After or, okay. Um as as with any new ask of students and teachers, you know, it's. Um time and experience and training, being able to do that synthesize. Step and that really fostering that discussion. The open up resource has um. A flip book with guiding questions. If a student is doing or saying this. A teacher should be asking these questions. If a teacher sees this in a group work, um they can. Uh ask these questions of students to help them move along or have them extend their thinking. Um next one, um some topics do not lend themselves well to an exploratory method of learning. Um one lesson in particular took a long time and the students did not seem to get the intended learning out of the exploration. Um again, it's time, experience, training, the professional learning that we're gonna, the amazing professional learning. Um that we're gonna have with this, that it is such a shift in. Teachers letting students kind of guide the teacher questioning as opposed to the. Teacher. Always posing the questions. It's like you're being much more student-centered. Yes, yes. Um and that's, that's a diff- that's a shift and a a difficult um challenge sometimes. Especially if you're not comfortable with that and haven't had the experience. Um when students are absent, it's difficult to catch up. And I I don't know if you can speak to that, if you've had absent students.
Yes, I've had absent students. So um I have like an extra side. Um well, packet at the moment because we're just copying from the PDFs online at the moment. Um that I kind of fill in a couple of quick jots of what I've seen around the classroom and then they can use that the next day as their um. Packet of what I missed. And it seems to have been working for the past four weeks, but we shall. See what happens the next four weeks.
Um I I'm sorry, I I perhaps wasn't clear before when I I attempted to answer the question, but. Some of the problems that that I read in the survey were getting students to discuss and to engage in the discussion. Um being able to support students and have enough practice for students to be able to solidify their thinking. So I think that's another. Piece that Cindy just read that. Um and then. The the only other piece I'd add about that is one of the pieces that we don't have during the trial because. Fortunately, we are gonna have it now, but we weren't originally given it was, there's a whole nother section of the resource that is, it's it's an extra cost. So during the trial, the company did not let us use it. But it's, it offers the students videos and help and um different pieces that they'll be able to utilize at home. Um and so, for example.
Isn't that fairly standard with the curriculum now that, I mean?
Not to this degree. Um so they have, for example, in in mid-school math, there's a couple. Um but these are videos, um they're 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 more robust than what we've seen in others. Uh which makes sense for the level of math that 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 the students are partaking in. Um but so when last week we had, after Cindy and I had visited some classrooms, we were noticing that piece and hearing from students that. There was some struggle there. So um Cindy contacted the vendor and they were able to allow us to utilize those videos during this trial now. So we knew they were coming in the fall, but unfortunately they're gonna let us use those uh free of cost now. So I I do think that that gives another opportunity for students to be able to practice those pieces or for families to engage at home. I did speak with one parent this week. Um and that was one of the parents' concerns. How can I support at home? Um and and so that's another piece that I think is a a good step.
James? Yeah, how many teachers are participating in this trial?
Uh fourteen teachers.
And you said it's been going on four weeks. How long is it scheduled to go?
It's it's dependent on the teacher. So teachers volunteer to participate in the trial. Um some teachers have not started yet. Teachers at East, they wanted to wait until the trimester began so that it was uh kind of a. A nice spot to start a new unit. Um so we have four teachers at East that are gonna be beginning. Um and then teachers can use it for the remainder of the year. Um there's two teachers that will not be continuing after the first unit.
So now the selection of a curriculum is a multi-year process, right? And so teachers being a primary stakeholder in that process, it's my understanding what I've heard tonight is they had three weeks. Um back in fall. Is that a correct statement? To evaluate or to read and and to get acquainted with the the curriculum and then provide feedback. Um can you describe the feedback that we received at that time?
Yeah, absolutely. Um so, yes, they had, yes, they had three weeks to use the resource. Electronically and um they had some physical copies in their classroom. Um at that time, they were actually um evaluating two different resources. Um and so both were available to them. And the feedback that they provided was um that for this resource open up. Um eighty-two percent of them thought that it had the rigor and balance that was needed for a high school resource. Um that on a on a scale of five, three point five, um. They it it averaged three point five for usability. That would be um how teacher-friendly it was, were there differentiation pieces for students? Uh the tools basically that teachers would use. Um and then it's, and then overall, the overall endorsement by teachers was three point five as well. Whereas the other resource um was uh only two point eight. So. This was the resource that the that the teachers had indicated was the one that they'd like to move forward with.
So a three point five, what does that tell us? Does that tell us that, you know, given this? This is the quality of the resource, or does it inform you whether or not they are willing to adopt the the curriculum? So that three point five, we're supposed to interpret that as, yes, go. There's not a threshold, it has to be a four in order to for adoption?
No, um not that we've used in the past. Um so we're very open to feedback in the process. Um honestly, during my time in this department, we've been trying to improve the process. Um so the, in this case, the fact that we are um including even more teacher voice in the past. Not every teacher in the district has had the opportunity to be able to review a resource. It's been select groups of teachers. And so during our time that we've been doing this, we've opened it up to any teacher who would like to participate in the process. Can view the resource, come to the vendor meeting and provide feedback.
So now moving to this uh trial, um have you received feedback from the trial teachers? And if so, um what's their position? If there's a five-point scale, what's their likelihood to support adopting the curriculum?
In in the trial, because we've used the trial as a springboard for implementation. We we did not ask them that question. We've asked them for feedback as to what is going well and what are the challenges. So at this point, we have not asked them. Do you still endorse it? We have not, Cindy and I have worked with, Cindy has worked with every pilot teacher and there's been no. Uh teacher who, I now I'm changing my verbiage, trial teachers. There have been no trials teachers that have indicated that they would not want to move forward with this.
Nancy?
Of fourteen teachers, that's middle school and high school?
Primarily only high school, um because it's an algebra resource. So there's um only a few algebra courses in middle school. So it's primarily high school teachers.
And are all schools, all high schools represented?
Yes. I have positive comments from teachers and students too. I mean, I read the the challenges, but I have some great. Positive teacher comments and feedback too, if it like, um I like that it makes the students take ownership of their learning. I can tell that students are willing to do the work and figure it out. Um it has been what positive watching kids generate mathematical thinking and gratifying watching students work. Um as some did not work before. Those are teacher comments.
Brian, I appreciate the feedback with that as well. Like I said, I was addressing some concerns that had just been forward to me with this. Um could you explain how it would read, especially with the video part? You know, students are taking algebra in eighth grade are kind of on that path as well with it. Um but how this? How you can envision this helping um students who are receiving services in IEP and also we have a significant absenteeism. Concerns and transient population stuff and how that will help us. Um in particular, students that are receiving services in IEP um get those classes to them in in a. Appropriate manner, so.
So our goal is to truly make our courses equitable for all students. So students with IEP, students of color. Students across the board, any student. Um right now, unfortunately, we 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 can't necessarily say that's true. Um across the board in our algebra courses, uh teachers use different materials at each building. Um and sometimes within a building. So it makes it more difficult for students with IEPs, for um ML learners. Teacher, students who get supports from outside the classroom because those supports coming into the classroom aren't familiar with. Go ahead.
Can for, um I'm assuming that this will be able to be front-loaded for students that are receiving services. That accommodations will be easier to be met with, especially the teachers and support staff on there. These lessons will give them that opportunity to front-load it and to review it during a a study hall or guided study period with it. And help them with the sex, the success that they're looking for on that.
Thank you for that answer. Yeah. No, I'm tru- truly, truly though, I I would just like to point out that during the um teacher informational nights and the vendor nights. Not only math teachers attend. So um we had representation from pupil services, so ML teachers. As well as special education teachers, and their feedback was taken into account as well. And Cindy would be able to dig in to give you those specifics, but they did call out the differentiation pieces that were available. Sorry, multilingual learners.
Yeah, Brian? When Stafford trained on this, I know sometimes special ed staff um are forgotten for either budgetary reasons or just. It happens. Um they'll be able to be included on some of this training and I assume, is that built into the request with this as well?
Yes, it is.
Uh James?
I have one more question for you. So the you didn't ask the question of the the trial. On teachers, whether or not they still endorse the curriculum. Is it practical? At all in the next two weeks before we take a vote to adopt, to ask that question of those teachers so that we can just. You know, make sure that we translate all this into something actionable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um I'm gonna call on myself then. What um? I guess what I, what I'm not. The this isn't the ringing endorsement, I guess, that I, and maybe that's, maybe that's colored by the fact that. Um a few people, you know, a few people reached out with with concerns. Um. I I guess that's where my, what? And and obviously, that it seems clear that teachers liked the other finalist option significantly less. I guess, did we, did we have the two right finalists? Then, I mean, if there's, you know, usually, a lot, not always, but a lot of these curriculum adoptions, there's a pretty pretty ringing endorsement with relatively few concerns where honestly, if there's two finalists out of all the curriculum out there, I would, I would prefer to have it getting, you know, both of them getting better than a three point five on if we're doing a five-point scale.
Yeah, so yes, there's many, there's many resources. So what we first do is we look at Ed Reports, which is a a well-trusted resource, in fact, in order to receive, to use your ESSR funding for some materials, it has to have a meets expectations mark on Ed Reports. So the district team reviewed resources for cultural bias and for high quality before we brought anything to the teachers. And so the two resources that we're bringing before you, the one resource had no, not no points were taken off on Ed Reports. So it receives the highest score possible. It's it's well-respected and used throughout the United States and Wisconsin. The other finalist was in that same category. But again, the teachers preferred the one that we're bringing forward with you tonight. I know I'm just one person, but and I know many of you have heard this before, but I'm a parent here in Green Bay too, and my students will attend Prebble. And this is the resource that I would want my students to be able to use in mathematics. I'm very happy that Green Bay went with Bridges. My students are using middle school math right now, and soon they're going to be at at Prebble. And this is the right direction to go, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, we will, thank you. We'll move that one forward and then up next we have high school world language resource adoption.
Thank you all.
Okay, so I have a little bit to read for you again about world languages. So tonight I am joined by Kelly Vadava, who is the curriculum coordinator in teaching and learning, who's been leading this resource adoption. And then Stephanie Yonk, a Spanish teacher at Prebble. And so we're requesting the approval of the CLAT resource, Reporteros for Spanish and Reporters Francophones for French. In Green Bay, we are rich with opportunities for students to engage and excel in world languages. We offer AP courses, dual credit courses, and the Wisconsin SEAL by literacy for students to attain at least for students who attain at least an intermediate high proficiency level. These options provide students the opportunity to become fluent in a world language and begin building their college or career pathway while in high school. And yet, over the past several years, we've seen a steady decline in students enrolling in world language courses. Our, in our initial teacher survey, teachers confirmed that they were concerned with the number of students dropping world language. And they indicated that our current resource was not preparing students to reach an intermediate high level, which is needed for those additional credits and certifications. So we knew we needed to find a resource that would engage students and still offer rigorous learning opportunities. During our selection process, we were sure to include more student voice than we have in the past because these are elective courses and because we know that the student enrollment is declining. Our team presented the top three choices to students across the district. We visited AP classrooms, middle school classrooms, and even cafeterias to hear from students who hadn't yet taken a world language course. We showed them those three resources and also shared the resource again with teachers virtually and physically. And both students and teachers selected the CLAT resources that we're bringing forward tonight. We believe that this is going to be an engaging opportunity for students, yet challenge students to have a balance of speaking, listening, reading, and writing in authentic ways so that they can learn how to communicate in another language and hopefully continue with world language courses. Kelly would like to share a little bit of feedback that she has gathered from teachers and students.
Okay, so the major shift that occurred in two thousand nineteen when Wisconsin adopted their new standards for world languages had to do with the balance of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So it took the whole literacy approach as opposed to the reading and writing components. So that was a major point that we wanted to focus on when gathering feedback from students. Prior to the trial, one of the questions we asked the students was what do you think would help you learn Spanish better? And overwhelmingly, they responded that more opportunities to speak in Spanish. So we gave the survey last week to see how the students felt about the resource. In addition to visiting multiple classrooms like Young's and at Southwest and Red Smith and East. So all the classrooms were visited to gather some authentic feedback as well. So prior to the trial, approximately twenty-five percent of the students said that they frequently spoke in Spanish with their classmates. After participating in the trial, sixty-eight point seven percent said they frequently speak Spanish with their classmates. In addition, their reading in Spanish text had gone up and they're listening to Spanish being spoken. And they mentioned specifically being in the language-rich environment. Because one of the other major shifts with the standards was moving to ninety percent of the time being in the target language. So that means that the teacher is speaking Spanish ninety percent of the time. What they're reading in their books is in Spanish ninety percent of the time. And how they respond to each other is in Spanish ninety percent of the time. So that was a significant shift for the students. However, so that was something that we were looking at and knowing that it was a shift. But overwhelmingly, the students have responded that they really like the resource because they are hearing and using Spanish more frequently. And that one of the students mentioned, it's like a treasure hunt to understand what we're hearing or reading, which is fun. So Stephanie can give you more information about the language acquisition that goes on in this process and how being part of a language-rich environment is leads to that. But despite the fact that the students call out that it's more difficult, they also mentioned in the same statement, it's more difficult, but I feel like I'm learning more. Or it's more challenging, but it's helping me learn more words and phrases because I have to use context clues. So it's more rigorous, but they're getting more from it.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Yonk. I teach Spanish at Prebble High School. And I'm excited about this new resource. My students are excited, not every day, right? But anytime you do something new, you're not really sure how things are going to go down. And so I tell them that. I said, you know, I have a lot of years of teaching experience, but this is my first experience teaching this with this curriculum. So I'm learning as we go. And they are, the the room is set up so that they're already in groups and able to communicate very easily with each other. Initially, they were like, English, English. And, you know, I just said when we started the the pilot that you're not going to understand every single word that's being said, and that's okay. All you need to do is get the idea of what's happening and watching me. And looking at your classmates, what are they doing? And, oh, oh, that's what I'm doing. Oh, okay. Um, so it's a lot of, you know, a different way of it's not, we're taking notes and then you're going to do these six verb conjugations and then you're going to produce it on an assessment. And then we move to the next thing. They're actually doing performance-based assessments. So we just finished the first one in this preliminary unit where they were having a conversation at their table about weekend plans. All kids love to talk about themselves and what's happening in their world. So it was all very relevant. Wasn't like, I have you memorize something that is obscure and you don't need to think about it again. This is like real world, like, okay, you're sitting with your friends. You would just be saying, hey, what are you doing tomorrow? Oh, I'm doing this. Oh, that sounds fun. And, you know, talking about I don't know where it's going with that, but I I don't know. It's just, it's, to me, it's fun. They are, they're, they're, they're coming along. They're catching on that you don't need to know every word. You don't have to spell everything exactly correctly. You're communicating. And that's like the first thing that we did day one. And the thing that I love about this resource is there's so many graphics for them to see and like we had so many of those graphics in my classroom, just like, oh, that's Barcelona. Oh, that's what that poster means. Oh, that's Frida Kahlo. Oh, that's what that painting means. So they were just starting to look around the room like, oh, that's why you have that up there. So very intentional about what I have in my classroom so that this just kind of comes full circle that it's it's providing like a lot of exposure to things that they've already been seeing, but now they're kind of making connections on how it's important.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. We'll move that, they'll move forward to the next to the regular board meeting. And then we have the elementary keyboarding resource adoption.
Okay, so this is Amanda Hurlash. She is a curriculum coordinator in teaching and learning. And tonight, we're here to request approval of a new elementary keyboarding resource, Keyboarding Without Tears. This actually, this process. It was a good one too, no? During the two thousand nineteen school year, the resource Keyboarding Without Tears was selected to replace the current keyboarding resource, Herzog. Unfortunately, due to the events of that year and the following year, that process was delayed until this fall. So we were recently able to bring the resource. We were able to provide the K five teachers with the opportunity to review the resource and to meet with the vendor, just as we have been doing with our process. Our goal was to find a resource that aligned to the Wisconsin Standards for Information and Technology, engage students, and it took minimal time for instruction. That was one of the concerns that teachers had in our initial survey that we sent to them. We know, they they said, we know that keyboarding, and it's, and that's a misnomer. It's not just keyboarding that they're learning. The youngest learners are using how to use a mouse, how to use a touchscreen, different, different features like that. So they had said, we know that it's important. We know that students need this. However, we are concerned about where will the time come? So that was our third piece was how do we make sure that we choose something that isn't going to take away from instructional time? So we believe that we found that in our resource. We're recommending that for K two, that this is a supplemental resource, so teachers would use it with discretion at their discretion, as to say. And then for three, five, three, five students, we are recommending that this would replace our current resource, which is Herzog. Our initial teacher survey before they even saw a resource, sixty-six percent of K two teachers that responded, again, we sent this to all K two teachers in the district, so we had about five hundred responses. Sixty-six percent of the teachers said that they would support any adoption of a keyboarding resource. Eighty-one percent of the three, five teachers said that they would support any adoption of a keyboarding resource. We asked for volunteers to participate in the resource. Elementary is a little different than high school. You can't have every elementary teacher come to a vendor meeting. So we asked for volunteers to continue in the process. After those teachers reviewed the resource, one hundred percent of the K two teachers that reviewed the resource said that they would support it. And eighty percent of the three, five teachers said that they would support Keyboarding Without Tears. So we are asking to be able to adopt the Keyboarding Without Tears resource.
Brian? I assume the program will also allow them to use the, I'm just looking at their website right now, the media web balance, the digital footprint and all the other activities that are on there, which will obviously help our students as well.
Yeah, one of the resource, one of the way, reason that this was, this resource came out above the others was because of the other pieces. So it has the digital citizenship built within it. So that was one of the selling points for this resource.
Okay, what's, just a very short version, what's, what's different or better about this? What does this improve over the Herzog?
So our current resource Herzog is based in a word processing document. So students open up, now it would be Google. When it was adopted, it was Word. And the teacher stood up, probably how a lot of us were taught keyboarding, stood up in the front of the room and students, you know, found the key and typed it. And it was teacher-led, and it needed to be done every day for, I want to say it's, it was like eight weeks, was the recommended implementation of the resource. This resource is completely student-driven. So they're divided by grade level. A student logs into the system. And their recommendation is about five to ten minutes per day, thirty minutes per week. So that can be thirty minutes all at one time. That could be ten minutes while, you know, after they're done doing morning check-in. And then it's student-paced. So if a student is, you know, accelerating through the lessons, they would continue on. If a student, you know, is is newer to learning keyboarding or navigating the mouse, then they would take a little bit more time. It is meant to be used across the whole school year. If a student finishes before the end of the school year, they're put into like a practice mode. So they don't, the company does not believe that they just stop. They would pick up and do different activities to help continue their progress.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you. That will move forward to the next board meeting, and that concludes the education agenda.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're moving on to operations. And that will be good night, guys. Oh, thank you. Good luck. We're going to move on to operations, which will be facilitated by Don Smith.
Okay, first item on the operations agenda is going to be the school security drills. I had Chris was facilitating this.
This is just the standard review that's required by law. So we'll come back to you at the next meeting for vote.
Does anybody have any questions? Alrighty, then we will go on to item B under operations, secondary desktop request for proposal.
Hello, again, I've got Justin Zacker here. He is our infrastructure supervisor. He's standing in for Amy Sturks, who is out on leave currently. So I'll let Justin run the show here.
Good evening, as Josh said, I'm standing in for Amy. So I'll just give you a quick little overview. So our CTE labs and our secondary schools were last replaced back in two thousand nineteen, so they're in need of replacement again. The software that's running those Um, the software that's run on those devices is a little higher, higher end. Uh, as you might imagine with uh, business ad and tech head. So uh, tho- those pieces of software updated on a yearly basis and as you can imagine, the hardware requirements for those pieces of software. Um, continue to go up and up, nothing ever goes back down. Um, so that's why we're in need of uh, replacement of those devices. So we put out a request for proposal looking for a Lenovo P three sixty workstation. And our uh, we reviewed our existing hardware and I projected forward. Um, what the new hardware requirements would likely look like for the software that we currently use. And so that's a recommendation there. Uh, along with the desktops, we also are looking for a new um, twenty-four inch monitor to standardize across all of our. Uh, CTE labs. Um, most of them have at least one twenty-four inch monitor now. Uh, many of them have either a second twenty-four inch monitor or a nineteen inch monitor, so we're looking to standardize those. So that's why we're looking to purchase uh, seven hundred of the Lenovo P three sixty workstations. That uh, includes a three-year warranty as well as one thousand Samsung twenty-four inch monitors. Uh, those also come with a three-year warranty. As you can see, those numbers don't line up. Uh, but that gives us enough to ensure that uh, every student has the same experience. Uh, so I can take any questions on those proposals now.
Questions? Yes. I'm s- I'm sorry. No, I I know you go ahead. I've had uh. I I have no questions.
This is a five-year refresh normally, right? Is that the typical five-year refresh?
The last time we refreshed them, they, I think the devices had lasted seven or eight years, um, which was far past the life that they should ever live.
What do you do with the nineteen inch monitors?
Uh, normally we'll work with Jake Alveson and uh, procurement to see if we, if they have any value uh, for sale. Um, but otherwise, uh, we'll likely uh, hold on to some of those as backups as well as the uh. Existing lab machines, uh, they could potentially be used in other non-lab areas um, as replacement desktops.
Anyone else? Alrighty, thank you. This will uh, come forward at our regular board meeting and then our next item is food service vendor recommendation. Josh, are you going to be?
Yep, I'm taking this one here, so um, this, this is an RFP for uh, what we call our prime vendor. We do this every five years. Um, the pride and vendor in food service is kind of our, I guess, main supplier. Right? Our goal is to spend. Or to buy eighty percent of our food service stuff through the prime vendor. In exchange for that, they give us a better deal on prices. Um. Our current prime vendor is Reinhardt, which was recently bought out. Um, they did respond to the RFP along with Cisco. Um, in addition, we had one no bid response. Um, and you can see the scoring in in the board memo. Um, Reinhardt, which is now called performance food service, uh, was significantly cheaper. We've had no problems with the um. With the current arrangement, so we are happy to recommend um, sticking with what's working for us.
Okay, any questions? Awesome, we'll bring that one forward. Next, we have the semi-annual financial report and S R spending update. And we have Angie and Sarah are coming to present for us.
Good evening. Now that Josh stole my thunder, I guess we can, we can eliminate those last four slides. Just kidding, Josh. Um, so Sarah and I are here, this um, these reports that we had attached in the agenda under board docs. Um, should look somewhat familiar. We've been coming to the board the last couple of years with the semi-annual report, so we'll be giving you. A high overview of um, Fund Ten and Fund Twenty Seven, so special ed and operating funds. Um, the agenda tonight, Sarah will be giving those highlights. And then we'll talk about our student membership updated in January versus our teacher F T E. Um, we'll also review the revenue limit um, formula. For you, just as a reminder of the foundation of how school finance works. Um, it's a, it's a key thing to just, it, I think it helps just to review that every time we're up here, for everyone's sake. Um, we'll give you an S R update, we'll uh, tell you what we're doing to address the fiscal cliff and then we'll um, briefly go through the budget transfers. That we'll ask you to vote on um, at the end of the month.
So if you wouldn't mind, um, if you want to follow along, pulling up the document that was attached to the agenda called um, Board Semi-Annual Report. Um, I'll refer to that a couple of times in this, with this slide. Um, so as Angie said, the focus of this financial report will be to compare budgeted amounts to actual amounts for the first two quarters of twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, in both the general fund and special education fund or funds ten and twenty-seven. Um, property taxes totaling fifty-two point eight million dollars will be received in January, February and August. And the first large uh, payment from the state came in in December in the amount of forty-seven million dollars of equalized aid. A majority of our revenues are received in the second half of the fiscal year, but because we have a healthy fund balance. We do not have any cash flow issues that could result in any short-term borrowing needs. Um, if you go to page three of that document, I just asked you to pull up, you can see um, there's a total revenues graph. Uh, we've budgeted approximately three hundred million dollars in revenues for this year. And we, year to date through December, have received a little less than a hundred million. Um, one revenue item of note that's increased significantly is interest income. As you all can imagine, um, two years ago, we had less than twenty thousand dollars in interest income. Last year, we had approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, we're predicting and projecting close to two million dollars in interest income for this year. Um, for obvious reasons with the rates. Um, on the expenditure side, on page four of that document, we've also budgeted just under three hundred million uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three in expenditures. We've spent just over a hundred million through December thirty-first. Uh, sixty-five percent of Fund Ten expenditures are made up of salaries and benefits. And ninety-two percent of the special education budget is made up of the same. Uh, salaries and benefits are coming slightly, in slightly lower than projections year to date. Um, these year-to-date numbers are in line with what we expected and we continue to monitor the financial activity on a monthly basis.
So this is. I should know that by now. So this is um, the, a graph that we've brought um, to the board a couple of times. It was in our preliminary budget document. Um, for twenty-two, twenty-three, but it shows um, the student membership versus the teacher F T E. So if you can recall, when we brought this to the board. Um, and presented it, that red line which represents that total employee F T E or full-time equivalent is what that stands for. That red line was going in the opposite direction of where our January student enrollment was going. So those blue bars are the student enrollment through um, or updated through twenty-two, twenty-three. Of January membership and then that F T E is is updated as well for current. Um, I think a couple of weeks ago, so. The point that I wanted to make with this graph is that we are moving in the right direction. When I brought this forward. Um, you know, a few months ago, or I guess it's been more than a few months ago, last year sometime, we were headed in the wrong direction, right? So as a district, we have, you know, the strategy is to start aligning that um, those F T E with our declining enrollment. Um, and you know, through attrition, so that has been the strategy and and we're moving in the right direction.
So this slide is that uh, revenue limit authority formula that Angie touched on in the agenda. It's just basically a reminder of the revenue limit formula that the district operates under. Um, as a reminder, re- revenue limit minus state aid equals the amount we can levy for property taxes. Something important to understand is that the equalized aid has an inverse relationship with property taxes. And that the more equalized aid we get, the amount of property taxes we can collect decreases. Um, and I apologize, Kinsey, I have a slide in front of me that's not up there, but um, the last page of that. Uh, S R spending December thirty-first document. I think we talked about that one. There, and if you scrolled on to the last page of that, please. Um, so this document, oh, sorry, not the last page is blank. Interpreted as you will. This document shows uh, the three categories of S R funds um, with cumulative claim, cumulative claims amounts. So S R one is fully spent, as you know, um, S R two must be spent by September of twenty-three. And S R three funds must be spent by September of twenty-four. Um, claims from July one through December thirty-first of this year were six point six million dollars. Of that, two point eight million dollars was S R two and three point eight million was S R three. Um, S R two claims include costs for summer school, uh, K J Academy or online school. Software, internet access and other eligible expenses. Uh, while claims under S R three include reading and math interventionist, uh, mental health services, software. And also other eligible costs. Um, there was another sheet attached to the agenda. Um, which shows the claims detailed by quarter and that's also on our district website for anybody that wants to take a look at it.
Can you back up one, Kinsey, please? Yep, there you go. Okay, so addressing the fiscal cliff. Um, so as the district works to address that fiscal cliff that we've been talking about in twenty-four, twenty-five, as it has been mentioned previously. We are seeing some of those savings as we reduce those expenditures in the current year and in next year until we get to that twenty-four, twenty-five period of time. So what that means for us is a couple of things, and I think it's a key point to understand that. As we, as we decrease those expenditures over the course of the next two years to address that cliff in twenty-four, twenty-five. That there is less S R funding that is kind of filling that deficit that we're currently operating on, right? So in our budget this year, we have twelve and a half million dollars that is in our operating budget. That is the deficit that we would have had if we wouldn't have had the S R funding. So that's really important to reiterate that, because that is what is happening these next couple of years. We're operating on S R funding. Otherwise, we would be addressing those deficits deficits this year, next year and and beyond. So I think that's, I think that's really important to to focus on and I think when S R funding, you know, was provided to school districts. The purpose and the intent of it was to use it on one-time spend, right? We've we've used that term here several times. Um, so when we use it on legacy costs, like staffing, benefits, right? That's where this fiscal cliff comes into play and there are other factors, of course, but that's one thing just to keep in mind. So this gives the district, S R funding gives the district the opportunity, right? And it enables enables us to use these funds on things like professional development, curriculum, technology. Things of those nature that a couple of years ago, maybe on things that we should have already had years ago, but now we have the opportunity to do it right now. Or things that may come up now or in near, the near future where we won't have the funds to do those things. So here and now is the opportunity to use those funds for some of these things. So in the future months, you are going to see administration come forward with these budget requests to spend S R funds. On high-ticket items, right? Because these are things that we wouldn't have been able to afford without S R funding. So I think it's really important to know that. Um, that is the goal, right, is to to get that, those things into place while we currently have the funding and use that as an opportunity as a district. So the things that are brought forward, of course, um, you know, the intent is to, you know, improve student outcomes. To um, create staff efficiencies, whether that's at the school building level or at the district level. So just something just to keep in mind as you see these things come forward, because, you know, to the point of equalized aid. If we don't expend the funds that are in Fund Ten, we lose out on aid next year. Now, there was a comment made earlier that said, you know, if we put it into fund balance, I think it might have been Andrew, that we are penalized and that's exactly it now. That doesn't mean that we couldn't put excess funds into fund balance, but we really don't have excess funds per se. Because to your point, Laura, you've got S R funding, right? Kind of filling in that gap over in operational, so if we didn't have S R, we'd be in a deficit, so. Because we get sixty cents, we're highly aided, you know, sixty percent aided as a district, every dollar that we spend, we get sixty cents in aid. So if we did have a fund, you know, excess money to put into fund balance at the end of the year, then of course, right? We wouldn't get that aid next year and then that drives up your levy. Um, so are there any questions in regards to to that? I mean, we can stop and talk about that. James?
I appreciate that explanation. The concern, I think, voiced by members of the the boards. As these big-ticket items come up and we take advantage of S R dollars. Looking around the corner, twenty-four, twenty-five, we just don't want the cost of operating the district to go up. Because of these high-ticket, you know, uh, items that are covered initially by uh, S R funds. So as we bring forward these expenditures, we we have to be careful that overall, our our strategy. To reduce the operational footprint, right, of the districts in twenty-four remains intact.
You bet, and completely understand, there's a lot of the software contracts that came forward last year, right? That we did like six years out, seven years out because of the discount that we get upfront when we do that. And of course, like that is already being considered. We know that those have to be absorbed. And then people will shift in their budgets, like teaching and learning, I'll I'll pick on them, you know, they've got, you know, to set aside and know that. Yep, we'll give this up because this was really important for us to move the district forward. So um, you know, those, that strategy is also being discussed as we go through department budgets. Thanks for that. Okay, Kinsey, you can move on. Thanks. Okay, so budget planning, next steps. So again, um, the twelve and a half million is budgeted in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, with about thirty-eight point nine million remaining to be spent next year, that's a projection. I um, I would expect that twelve and a half million to be about fifteen to sixteen million in expenditures this year. So a little bit more than than what's in the budget currently. So when we talk about um, the estimated projected deficit range. There's a range here, because if you recall, we've talked about, we don't know much yet, right? So I don't know anymore than I did a couple of months ago, except for um, that the CPI has been finalized at eight point zero one percent. So currently, you know, um, the board gave the four point seven six percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then previous to that, you know, it was two percent or less for several years. So again, another factor that's contributing to that large fiscal deficit that we're seeing or fiscal cliff. Um, in twenty-four, twenty-five, but we don't know what the state budget is yet. Negotiations for the wage increases won't be until after we have that finalized budget. Um, and when we have those items, then we can really look at what that deficit looks like in the future. So that's why um, it's a range, which is really strange, right? Like, does does she really know what she's talking about, kind of? Um, so once we know, once we know those things, that will definitely um, help obviously in projecting. Uh, um, where we're going to land in the next couple of years. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, like we did last year for the first time, Sarah and I will be bringing forward a preliminary budget document. To discuss with the board this summer, um, just so you kind of know what's coming and again, hopefully we know more than we do now. Um, but I'm not making any promises.
Um, so this last last slide is what we'll be asking you to vote on in two weeks. These are the budget transfers that have happened since the board certified the budget in October. Um, you can see they're pretty minimal net of about eighty-nine hundred dollars, um, but it's just changes between what we call subfunctions or account codes. So um, we do have detail behind this if anybody's ever really interested in seeing it, but. Yeah.
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is benefits recommendation. And I believe that's going to be Lori and Randy will be with us.
Well, they're getting set up. I just want to take a second to say thank you to the members of this committee for the countless hours that they put in over the last couple of months to come to this point today. As I said to district office staff at a meeting last Thursday morning, the work that this committee did along with the handbook committee and some other things going on in the district are the reason why I know we're going to be okay. And I truly mean that. I know we're going to be okay because I've watched other districts go through things like this and could not come and sit before you like this group is right now. This is why I know the district's going to be okay. It doesn't mean that over the next couple of months, we've got some really heavy work to do. It's going to be hard. But this is why we're going to be okay.
Thank you. I just want to introduce our cast of characters here, right? And just to let you know, like Vicki said, we've been working on the benefits since October, knowing that with the budget information that we needed to do something. And it has not, as she said, been easy. There's been tons of conversations and tons of options reviewed. And what we're bringing forth tonight is really what we believe to be the best benefit recommendation we can. As you can see, it's a collaborative effort. Beck from M three is our broker, has been. I don't even know what the adjective is. Instrumental is not even enough, but the amount of work her and her team have done to find every option. What about this? What about that? Okay, can you go back and ask this? What if we did this instead? And run numbers for us actually is been phenomenal. Randy, Jess, Brent, Ben and David. So we've got G B A, Ask Me, H R, the B A C, we have members here in the audience that were on the B A C committee also. So it's been a very collective effort to evaluate a number of things. So with that, I will, Beck will really drive the PowerPoint that we have presented for you. And then any questions, let us know.
Well, thanks, everyone. It's nice to see you again tonight. Kinsey, we'll go to slide two right away, please. So during this plan year, two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three, we focused on strategies to gain employee feedback, to evaluate the different benefit offerings that the district has. And those two areas have really gone hand in hand as we surveyed employees, gathered that feedback, shared it back with the Benefit Advisory Committee, use that feedback then to evaluate different information about the benefit offerings themselves and how they compare to the benchmark with other public sector entities that M three represents. We've also looked at the financial stability of the district's plans and the district's recruiting and retention goals and the role that benefits play within that. And I want to echo both Vicki and Lori's comments, thanking the Benefit Advisory Committee. I did not keep a tally of the hours that we spent meeting with the Benefit Advisory Committee or the H R finance teams, but their work is really valuable as well, and we really appreciate that partnership. It makes the consulting side of things easier when we're able to all come together and really look for the best options. So that employee feedback, last time that I was here with you was in November, and we shared the employee feedback that we got from the E A P survey. At that time, we had two hundred and sixty nine employees who responded to the survey, and we were excited about that. We thought that that was a really good number, gathering feedback about those who had used the E A P program or wanted to share their input. After that meeting, then we had a benefit survey that dealt with the medical plan. And that had an amazing response rate, over thirteen hundred folks responded to that survey and shared their feedback with us. We use that feedback with the Benefit Advisory Committee, and the survey in its entirety was shared with that committee. And those recommendations or the the information was used to inform the recommendations that we're sharing with you this evening. One thing that I do want to point out about that feedback is that the staff took that survey prior to the Benefits Committee, H R team and finance, doing their work with regard to plan modeling and different plan alternatives. So the information that was shared with us really was that ground floor information to really guide the work from the very beginning. So a couple pictures of some of the highlights of the survey. The first one I'm sharing with you here, out of the nearly sixty pages of results, this one focuses on how your employees are feeling about their benefits. So you can see overall satisfaction with the benefits program. When we look at those that rated the program either satisfied or very satisfied, we're at eighty five percent. And then when looking at how they would rate the overall value of the health insurance coverage, seventy three percent of folks had rated it at excellent or above. The recommendations that we are bringing you this evening do not make changes to two very specific pieces. Kinsey, if you go to the next slide, thank you. Two really important parts, your folks had said loud and clear that they wanted to keep robust medical services and that they also wanted to maintain a wide network of providers. The recommendations we're bringing you tonight maintain both of those pieces. So the Benefit Advisory Committee, like I said, we've met nine times since October. We'll also meet again this coming Wednesday. And our goals on the Benefit Committee have been to understand our employee benefits utilization. That's not just this year, but that's every year that I've been working with your Benefits Committee, to price the plans appropriately and help employees to engage in their appropriate healthcare consumerism behaviors, positively impacting the plan utilization by knowing the benefits that they have and then using those benefits appropriately. And then finally, to provide feedback related to the employee benefits to help inform the recommendations that we make, not only to you, but the actions of the Benefits Team as they're implementing the benefits. We've looked at more than a dozen different scenarios of plan design options. Those were considered both by that internal H R and finance team as well as the Benefits Committee as a whole. And then we use the information and feedback from the Benefit Advisory Committee to refine those options and to, you know, narrow down which items would be finalists and then to finally come to the recommendation with you. We also reviewed the benchmarking data from Northeast Wisconsin and statewide public entities and use that information to also inform our work. So when we're looking at the benchmark data, each year M three compiles data from our clients and creates this benchmark report to help understand how a health insurance plan compares to others within the industry and within the region. So this particular report includes two hundred and two statewide clients, forty five Northeast Wisconsin public sector clients, and it uses data from the two thousand twenty two, twenty three plan design and uses costs from two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. So I think it might be reasonable to say, well, how come you're using costs from one year and plan designs from the other year? Good question. We need a full year of plan year costs, and that's the most recent completed full year costs. So that's the data that we're looking at within the benchmark. The benchmarking is really important to us for a few reasons. So first, it helps employers to know that their benefits are competitive with what the market looks like. But it also helps us to be confident in the fiscal stability of the plan. If we are out of line from the benchmark, that may be for really good recruiting and retention goals, but it may also be indicative of some adverse selection when there's multiple plans offered and folks select a plan that leads to increased utilization or consumerism behaviors that don't necessarily help the fiscal health of the plan. So when we look at the benchmark that we're going to look at today, we're going to look just at the traditional health plan. We are not looking at that minimum essential coverage plan. So looking at the traditional health plan, you know that there's a five hundred dollar P P O plan that's offered as well as a fifteen hundred dollar P P O plan with a health reimbursement arrangement. In both of these plans, the deductible level is well below the benchmark. And in that fifteen hundred single three thousand dollar family plan, the district sees premium savings while that member experiences essentially the same out of pocket as the five hundred single one thousand family plan. We've illustrated that in the dark blue bar that's shown on the far right graph. The employee responsibility is the same between those two plans. The district then supplements the fifteen hundred dollar plan with the health reimbursement arrangement and still well below benchmark. On the next slide, we take a look at the total plan costs. So with the deductibles being essentially the same between the two plans, the plan cost is the next factor. And looking at the plan costs, the five hundred dollar plans costs are higher than the benchmark and the fifteen hundred dollar plan lower than the benchmark, performing incredibly well. This fifteen hundred dollar plan's performance is really, it's one of the cases in the benchmark where it's a really good thing to be below the benchmark. But what this also tells us is that the fifteen hundred dollar plan is supplementing the cost of the five hundred dollar plan. We just saw the, on the previous slide, that the employee experience from a deductible perspective is essentially the same. And yet, the cost to operate the five hundred dollar plan significantly exceeds the cost to operate the fifteen hundred dollar plan.
So I, if if this was a small difference, I might have waited till the end, but there's, there has to be something more than just, I mean, people do their, do calculate what things are going to cost. So is it? How do we get a seven thousand dollar difference when between two plans where the out of pocket is? Is the same?
So I think part of that could be attributed to the fact that about twenty five percent of your membership is on the fifteen hundred dollar plan. Seventy five percent of your membership is on the five hundred dollar plan. But once that five hundred dollar deductible is met, there's essentially no incentive for the member utilizing the plan to be a good consumer of their healthcare.
Okay, I do, I. The the phrase, and maybe it's become a standard phrase, but no, I never liked it. The learning to become better consumers of of healthcare, I understand. I understand what the the words mean, but these are, these are people deciding to go to the emergency room or not. This is me, I'm not on the district's plan, but this would have been me deciding if my wife needed to go to the emergency room the other night, which she did. The, I I think what I'm, there there can't be though, that they're just having to see it, even though the district is covering that difference anyways. As you're saying, that's going to count for seven thousand dollars of of difference? It would, but I understand if we had, I would totally get it if it was, you know, five thousand and then, you know, if it had been one of the plans you were paying, but you you're going to pay the same because you have the H R, the H R A dollars, like.
I'm sorry, I cut you off, and I didn't mean to. So Andrew, the plan will pay those costs, but the design of the other recommendations that we are proposing will also help folks to experience the plan differently. We want to continue to drive folks to use the Bellin and Pervia near site programs, the urgent care, the physical therapy at those near site locations that allow you to access care more easily and more cost effective through those direct relationships with the local hospital systems. So that's an element of it. But the the other piece is the additional co pays with regard to the pharmaceutical program. You know, that is another element that is taking up a large portion of the spend that we have an opportunity to experience differently and have a really positive member experience as well.
Okay, thank you.
So definition of easily available. So the H R A, is that a, a file feed from the carrier through the E O B cycle? Or does the participant incur the expense, pay the expense and then get reimbursed by the expense? Because that's consumerism, right? Where it touches you, you end up getting reimbursed, but you see the cost.
It is an excellent question. It is not a file feed. The members do have to file for reimbursement. They can file the reimbursement once they have their explanation of benefits. So from a financial transaction standpoint, some members choose to save up those bills and pay the bills themselves and get reimbursed all at once. Others like to file immediately upon receiving that explanation of benefits so that there is not a cash flow concern when those bills come due from the provider. But there are certainly options, but it is not a direct file feed. The member does need to see those bills before they are reimbursed. Great question. All right, very good. Then looking at the total premiums paid by the plan, so this is the cost that is set to operate the plan. The five hundred dollar plan is above the benchmark with regard to the total premium, only slightly. The fifteen hundred dollar plan, though, below the benchmark. And again, essentially the same coverage overall. The next slide shows the employee share of the premium. And this is what the piece where you, when we look at recruiting and retention goals, this is most often a concern for the employers that we represent on the public side. The five hundred dollar plan, well below the benchmark, when your employees are completing their personal health assessment. And the fifteen hundred dollar plan is considerably below the benchmark, both with and without that personal health assessment. So the amount that your employees are paying for their monthly premium does really well compared to benchmark. You're offering really valuable benefits at a very low upfront cost to your employees. The next slide shows us the co pays for primary care services, specialty care and emergency room, each of these being below or well below the benchmark. And again, I want to point out that primary care services, while your fifteen dollar copay that currently exists is listed here, you also have the zero dollar option through Bellin and Pervia. The specialty care shown at fifteen dollars as well. You do not have a specialty care direct relationship, but specialty care significantly below where the benchmark is for seeing those specialists. And then finally, the emergency room copay well below the benchmark. And the emergency room, we don't have a direct relationship with. But in between there, we do have the urgent care available, both with Bellin and Pervia, as well as fast care at Bellin. So other options for more urgent type care for your employees and their families. And then next, we have the pharmaceutical co pays. So tier one, tier two and tier three, tier one being generics, tier two, the preferred brand name medications, and tier three, the non preferred brand name medications, all below the benchmark with regard to what your employees are paying for the cost of those prescriptions. One more slide on prescription drugs. This one comes from National Cooperative R X. So National Cooperative R X serves as our pharmacy benefit manager. They work with C V S Caremark. And this information was shared with our Benefit Advisory Committee in October of this year. And we look at the utilization as compared to C V S Caremark's National School Book of Business, to National Cooperative R X, the pharmaceutical cooperative that the school district is a member of, and then also C V S Caremark's Total Employer Book of Business. In each of those measures, we see that Green Bay is well below the benchmark, not just from an M three book of business perspective, but also with C V S Caremark and National Cooperative R X. Of particular note is the significant difference in the copay amounts. When you look at what a Green Bay area school district average claims, six dollars and fifty five cents, the copay played paid on an average claim as compared to nineteen twenty six or fifteen oh four or sixteen dollars. The amount that folks are paying for the use of those pharmaceuticals is considerably lower than the benchmarks for those three different measures. So then moving on from the benchmarking data, we also looked at utilization both by plan design and the eligibility during the current plan year. In this summary, you can see the amount of claims paid out as compared to the amount of premium paid in. That's that utilization percentage. Our active employees on the fifteen hundred dollar single three thousand dollar family H R A plan is performing the best. And the worst is the Medicare eligible, excuse me, Medicare eligible retiree plans. So our active fifteen hundred dollar H R A plan at seventy seven percent. So that plan is very healthy, where the others are each at or above fifteen, excuse me, a hundred percent utilization. Looking more closely at the retiree utilization, then, we can see the variance in the different plan designs, both for non Medicare and for retirees who are eligible for Medicare. I also wanted to point out on this particular slide, the variety of different plans that are offered to retirees. And that's based on the plans that were offered at the time that a retiree or that an employee left their. um, or that an employee left their active status and became a retiree. With the recommendations we're making tonight, this will allow, also allow some operational efficiencies and that some of those plans will not continue to be offered if the board adopts the recommendation this evening. So then a little bit more about how the plan is performing as of current. This particular document you've seen before, but looks at July 2022 through December of 2022. So we're showing the first half of the current plan year. The plans combined are performing at 106% loss ratio. So we're, we're performing what we would say is a little bit hot this year. We're paying out more claims than what we um, had expected when we came to with the recommendation to set the funding rates last year. Um, that's based on claims experience and also future claims experience that we know to be expected. Our risk management then is calculating a 7.16% increase needed to cover expenses for the upcoming plan year. Um, that includes high cost claimants that we know about right now. What it doesn't include is high cost claimants that may hit the plan after today, like what happened last year. Um, for the dental plan, this plan continues to perform really well. Um, prior year at 92% loss ratio, current year at 96% funding, doing really well. And we are calling for no increase on the dental plan costs for the upcoming year. Yes.
In your definition of running hot for the $1,500 plan, is that claims experience against major medical and the reimbursement out of the HRA combined?
Good question. So this particular document only shows the claims experience for the health plan. Um, the health reimbursement account traditionally has ran at about 16% utilization. And that is where we're tracking this year as well. Good question. All right. So that brings us to our recommendations. Um, like I had mentioned briefly earlier, we are recommending that we continue the administration with UMR. No changes to the United Healthcare Choice Plus Network and no service coverage changes. So coverages, excuse me, services that are covered today, we recommend continue to be covered in the upcoming plan year. We recommend continuing the Pervia Partnered Health, Bellin Near Site Clinic and Teladoc Virtual Care to provide your covered members with a variety of different access to care options at very low or no cost. And then we also recommend continuing to offer the Real Appeal Behavioral Weight Management Program that was implemented by the district um, a couple of years ago. The changes that we're recommending are um, made, you know, by the benefit advisory committee, the human resources team and the finance team with the support of M3, of course, um, recommending the following, to discontinue the $500 deductible plan. To distribute the premium increase in alignment with utilization, which is shown on the screen. Um, to make plan design changes to the co-pays that align with public sector benchmarks. And to leave the MAC plan, the Minimum Essential Coverage Plan, with that plan designed with no changes. So I'll talk a little bit more about the copay adjustments that we are recommending um, as shown on the screen. So the proposed changes to the co-pays would incentivize members to use the lowest cost, highest quality point of care. Covered plan members will continue to have access to those really great options through Pervia Partnered Health and Bellin Near Site Clinics, like I had shared. And as a reminder, the co-pays, all shown on the screen, do count towards the annual maximum out of pocket. And we are not proposing any changes to the annual maximum out of pocket. One of the pieces that may be of question is, gosh, that 30% incre, or 30% coinsurance on the highest level of prescription drugs and what happens for those members. Um, we want to be sure that you are fully aware that we do have a program called Prudent RX through the National Cooperative RX that would assist those 161 total members that would be subject, based on their current prescriptions that they're on, subject to that 30% coinsurance. Um, if they enroll in the Prudent RX program, which would include them getting a letter that Prudent RX is available, getting another letter that Prudent RX is available. And if not responding after the letters, getting a phone call to say that you are eligible uh, and to please sign up. Then they will be able to use the manufacturer assistance programs to access those medications at no cost to them. The benefit to the district then is the ability to maximize those manufacturer assistance programs. Where right now, if members are using those programs, the district is only seeing that $50 reimbursement level because that is your highest cost. So the 30% maximizes the amount that a member uh, could use through the manufacturer assistance, reimbursing the plan and not putting any additional expense on your member. The drug company foots more of the bill in that case. Um, one item, Andrew, if I can just tell a real quick story before you ask your question. Um, we've been working with, you know, the, the folks from Benefit Advisory Committee and a variety of associations. Uh, and we had one particular medication that a member asked us to run. And they had approached Dave and had said, you know, this medication cost me over $15,000 per month, plus the plan that much. Uh, what happens with the 30% coinsurance? 30% of $15,000 is a whole lot of money and it absolutely is. So that member right now is using the manufacturer copay card to cover that $50 copay. With Prudent RX, the manufacturer copay card, instead of paying $50, would pay the 30%. The member will continue to pay zero and the plan will experience more reimbursement than from, from the plan itself. So if we uh, implemented that 30% copay as uh, recommended for that highest tier of medication for the scripts that are eligible for Prudent RX, then again, we would work with Prudent RX and work with our communications teams to make sure that all of your staff and those that are eligible understood that program and understood how to take advantage of the program. Questions on that part?
I'm probably just missing something very obvious on this. Uh, looking at the prescription co-pays, retail is less expensive than mail order?
So the retail is for one month supply, the mail order is for 90 day supply. Good question, because that's not called out on the slide.
So I do, I do actually, I, I get the, the 30, you know, the 30% if it allows. Now are, does every, every single drug that you're proposing to be 30% have a significant manufacturer assistance program, or are there some that don't?
Great question. Only the medications that are eligible for this program, where if a member enrolled in the program, they could access those medications at zero copay, would be in that 30% category. Other specialty medications would continue in that $50 copay category.
Okay, I'm not sure if that exactly, uh, so every, every medication in the, in the 30% there is a manufacturer assistance program with a copay, manufacturer copay assistance card?
Yes, every medication in that tier of the formulary will have an assistance program. And I think it's also important to note that that will not be a needs-based assistance program. So you won't have members who don't qualify because they don't meet the income thresholds. It's programs that are not connected to a member's income. It's maximizing what's available from the pharmaceutical companies. All right, then on the next um, page, we've done some modeling, um, a variety of different modeling. And looking at what would the impact to a member be for the proposed changes? So the examples that are highlighted include the materials based off the, the summary and benef, excuse me, summary of benefits and coverages, the SBC, that the Department of Health Services requires health insurance companies to share. So Peg is having a baby and Joe having type 2 diabetes and Nia's fracture are not examples that I made up. But they are examples that come from the DHS regulations. Then what we've added to those is the proposed increase to the health insurance premium and then annualize that premium. So you can see that the 500 and $1,500 plan currently uh, and then the 2023, 24 recommendations, we really see very minimal impact to the member experience in terms of their annual cost out of pocket for the plan, when combining plan costs and the premium costs.
Just one other thing, you can also, oops, can go back one more. That, that actually since the premium for those people on the $500 plan will be less under the $1,500 plan, their total out of pocket. You can see like if you look, we'd go from 6196 actually to 5682. Their premium is less because it's a higher deductible plan.
What about, I, I thought we talked about this at the um, the pre-meeting that we had. Um, do you have the, or maybe it was in something else that I missed, but I was looking through it here and I'm not seeing it, the um, just the average, uh, just the average out of pocket amount spent by a single uh, um, family and an employee plus one? Okay.
These costs that appear, they include HRA reimbursement, right? So in order to get to that reduced spend with the 1,500, they've fully utilized the HRA and submitted reimbursement, right?
That is correct. In both the current year and in the future year recommendation, both of the $1,500 plan options do assume that the member is taking advantage of the HRA funds that the district allocates on their behalf. The next slide then shows how that health reimbursement arrangement works. So um, a large portion of our employee communication would be focused on the board action, assuming that the board takes action on the recommendations related to the health plan. And a large part of that will include a piece to explain further how the health reimbursement arrangement works. Um, this is a visual example that we had put together to kind of illustrate for a member how that out of pocket is achieved and the variety of different expenses uh, that would make that up. So members pay the first $500 in claims, that's what you see in the dark gray band at the bottom. Then the health reimbursement arrangement pays the next $1,000 in claims. And then the member pays 10% of the claims, up to a total of $1,500 in claims. At which point then the member has reached the maximum out of pocket. So you can see in the illustration that is up on the screen, that takes $15,000 in claims in order for the member to have reached their full maximum out of pocket. If members have additional HRA dollars from the wellness incentives, or if they have rollover dollars from the prior year, those can be used in addition to that $1,000 in this single employee example here. And that can be added to the contribution. Um, also, members that choose to can save additional tax-free dollars in their flexible spending account that can be used to cover some of those costs as well. So achieving some tax savings, as well as having funds set aside to cover those healthcare expenses.
The HRA um, contribution, those are then owned by the employee or the member. So if they leave, they still, do they still maintain control of that or no?
So the health reimbursement arrangements are employer-sponsored and employer-owned accounts. I think you're thinking of a health savings account. A health savings account is an employee-owned um, account that goes with them regardless of where they are. The district's health reimbursement arrangement does have a rollover provision though, so that funds can carry into the next year for the employee or the family to use in the future year.
For how long?
You're going to test me, I'm going to have to look at the plan doc. I have it with me though.
I believe that the, the rollover dollars single are $3,000 maximum and $6,000 for family.
And what, this plan design doesn't speak to the perpetual copay, right? Is that part of this plan design as well, or is it, is it not part of the 2324 plan?
So what is modeled here includes the plan design changes as proposed, which would include the changes in the co-pays than what is currently shown. So the co-pays would help to make up what is spent from the HRA bucket, the light gray, or um, for expenses that exceed the deductible. But those count towards that maximum out of pocket.
Danz, could you clarify what you mean by that?
So there's a point of um, sale, right? There's a copay that you owe at the doctor's office. It's 25 bucks or 50 bucks. That's perpetual. That runs up and down until you hit your maximum out of pocket. So this doesn't speak to the fact that even though you're after your 500 and you're being reimbursed by the HRA, you're still paying at point of sale, that $25 copay. And it just reduces the top end, right? You don't have to go as far up to the maximum because it's being taken off the top.
All of your co-pays, including those at Pervia and Bellin through those lower cost alternatives, all of your co-pays count towards the maximum out of pocket, both on the medical and the prescription drug side. We don't have any that track to a separate bucket.
Right. So you could be paying 10% coinsurance and some copay at the same time for expenses.
All right. So Andrew, I think these slides get at what you were looking at. Um, the next several slides and the information that was included in your board doc show the comparison between the 2022, 23 plan premiums and those that are proposed for active full-time employees. The models each use active full-time employees so that we're showing you consistent uh, information. You'll notice that employees that are currently on that $500 plan will see a decrease in their premium as they transition to the $1,500 deductible HRA plan. Then the next slide uh, shows the smaller number of the $500 deductible retiree plans that have to be maintained because of contractual obligations from the time that um, an employee had entered into retiree status. And again, our proposal is to increase those non-Medicare premiums by 10% and the Medicare eligible premiums by 50%. And I'll talk a little bit more about options for the Medicare eligible retirees in a future slide. The next slide shows the $1,500 deductible retiree plans uh, from 2022, 23 into the upcoming 2023, 24 year with that same premium distribution that we've shared. Um, and then the final premium difference that we show is the MAC plan, that Minimum Essential Coverage Plan. And we have active employees and retirees on the same plan here. Um, and showing just the difference in premiums there. So other benefit uh, recommendations that we have for you, other benefit plans that we offer include the dental, life and disability and vision insurance. Um, for dental, we're recommending no increase in the dental plan. And we're actually recommending an enhancement to the plan design, good news. Um, your dental plan has offered the same annual maximum of $2,000 worth of dental care per member for a very long time. The proposal is that we would increase that annual maximum to $2,500 per enrolled participant for their covered dental care. So that would allow covered members an additional $500 worth of dental care each year that would be covered by the plan. Um, we have sufficient reserve funding in the dental plan as well as the current premium rates. Um, based on the funding forecast that our risk management team has prepared to be confident in proposing that enhancement for members. So we know that dental costs have gone up. Um, this gives us an opportunity to increase that annual maximum that's covered by the plan. Then our life and disability plans through MetLife, we are in a rate hold until June 30th of 2024. So we're recommending no changes to the life insurance and the long-term disability insurance. And then vision, um, we talked about vision last year and we had a multi-year rate guarantee that goes through June 30th of 2025. So no changes recommended for vision. The next slide shows those dental rates. Again, we're recommending a rate hold, so you see no change from 2022, 23 to 23, 24 in dental. And then I'll address some of the questions that came up from the board um, when you met with the HR team previously. So one of the questions was regarding the health reimbursement arrangement utilization. So the HRA utilization for the district has been very consistent at about 16% since the HRA was put in place. We typically see our public sector groups run under 25%. Um, and when they run high, you know, a particular group may run high, still runs at about 40%. Um, so you know, that's why the HRA is really a nice cost-saving strategy. They typically are. They typically are not well utilized because folks don't need to access that additional level of care on a general basis. Some folks will need that care and then the HRA is there for them. Others won't need um, that additional care. So there is an increased cost in implementing the health reimbursement account because we'll have increased account fees on the health reimbursement account. Each fee comes with them, excuse me, each account comes with a monthly fee. That total cost is estimated to be about $90,000. But we anticipate that that $90,000 will be easily covered because even if the HRA utilization is high, those plan costs would still be coming out of the health plan because they're currently being covered by the health plan in that those folks who are on the $500 plan have already met their deductible. So they're already included in the claims costs being paid by the plan. So we've figured that into the calculation for the funding forecast, knowing that those claims are already present. Next question was about co-pays. So traditional health plans, those that are not qualified high deductible health plans like your MECC plan is, most often do have co-pays for services. So those co-pays are a specific amount that's paid for a specific service, not tracking towards the deductible, but continuing to track towards the maximum out of pocket. So if there's an additional question about the co-pays, I'd be happy to answer that. But um, that just kind of gives you an overview of co-pays. And then after that deductible is met, members pay the coinsurance for covered services that do not have a co-pay associated with them. And that coinsurance is at 10%, like we saw in the illustration of the health reimbursement arrangement. Alright, so next one is uh, questions about Medicare options. So I had a great conversation with our Medicare representative, Jason Haglund, who meets with your staff um, both in webinars and in individual meetings to help discuss their options for additional coverage or for different coverage as a Medicare eligible retiree. Uh, Jason shared with me that, so the, I, I guess I'll preface it. The question was, you know, can we guarantee that there's going to be better coverage or equivalent coverage at a lower cost? So there's never a guarantee with Medicare. But the plan design of the district's plan as well as the health insurance companies that offer Medicare plans, being the same that offer commercial plans, really makes us confident to say that we can find equivalent coverage in terms of what is offered for the plan. Jason shared with me that uh, since he's been doing the Medicare plans and he worked at United Healthcare prior to coming to M3, so he has more years of Medicare plans than just the few years that he's been at M3. He's only come across one situation where a member had a break-even option outside of the district's coverage. That was two years ago. And so that's prior to any of the more recent increases where we've differentiated the increase in the premiums to reflect the utilization on the plan. So if Jason were to go run that member now, he believes that that would show a cost savings as opposed to just a break-even. Then I already addressed the piece with regard to the level of coverage. Again, because employer-sponsored coverage and Medicare coverage are basically run through the same health insurance companies. We don't see major differences in coverages.
So one other thing just to mention is um, for those of you who may or may not be very familiar with Medicare, but there's supplemental plans and there's also advantage plans. And so there's different ways that people can look at that. But we do have a great resource that can actually walk um, any of our retirees who are our medical, Medicare eligible through that. So they can help to to decide which path they want to go. The other thing um, to mention is that this recommendation is a $1.9 million savings. And if we were to have just stay status quo, it would have actually been a $2.8 million increase. So the net between the two is really $4.7 million. We're not gonna say 4.7, but you know, follow what I'm saying, right? That swing, it it could have been 20 at one way, but we're actually saving 1.9. I also um, failed to mention, and I would be remiss to not say that Melissa and um, also and Angie have spent a ton of time with all of us too with the finance and legal stuff. So we've spent countless hours um, with all this. So I wanted, we didn't want to know how big this table wanted to be, right?
Alright, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask my question again, which was was not in those slides. What is the uh, under, and we'll just stick with the the, the main plan that everyone's gonna be moved to. I wanted to know under that plan, what does the, what is the average single in the district going to lay out of their pocket for their healthcare, the average member? And the average uh, employee spouse and the average employee children and the average family? And look at that compared to last year, right? So that's, that's how I have to look and see, okay, what is this? What's, what's happening? And I didn't, and my apologies if it's not in there, but I, I, I mean, I, I know of course where the, how to figure out what their plan cost is, their, right?
Are you asking their out-of-pocket cost or their actual premium cost?
Well, I know what their actual premium cost is because I'm, I'm looking at it. So yes, the, the, I want to know what the out-of-pocket, right? I know what the ma, I know what the, I know what the maximum number will be, which will be the maximum out-of-pocket plus 12 times that number. But um, and I, yep, I'm talking about, I don't know how many people are having a baby. I don't know how many people have type 2 diabetes and I don't know how many people have a simple fracture. Now, I know, I do understand that that's an industry comparison and it's, that's good. But uh, it's a question, it's a question I've had uh, every year and I'm always gonna have. And it should be actuarially, actuarially very easy to, to provide, right?
So everybody's healthcare needs are different. The number of times you go to the doctor, the number of different procedures that you have, the procedure you have this year versus the procedure you had last year, that changes. That's why we use these examples. But I think a number that I can share with you that might be helpful is our average total claims cost per member. That's the actuarial figure that our folks are using to determine projected claims costs into the next year. Does that help get where you, you want to go, Andrew?
In the interest of time, I'll, I'll defer and I'll, I'll ask George just my question to be answered by your actuarial department. But I mean, this is, I know everyone doesn't have the same expenses and I can look at those to inform some things. But the, when it comes right down to it, I, I need to know is the average, is the average family going to pay their, you know, premium plus a, a lot of that max out-of-pocket or, or just a little bit of it? And that's, that's why I've been after every, you know, every year since we started doing this. And every, every year since um, yeah, every year, except for the two that wasn't here.
So Andrew, I think I better understand your question. The weighted average claims per contract. So that includes single, it includes family plans, because a contract is per employee's health plan. The average claims is $1,104. Obviously, some of us will have $500 worth of claims and some of us will have $50,000 worth of claims. But the average of all covered employees contracts on the plan, $1,104.
Oh, I would, I would love to get an actual actuarial distribution of it with some, with some quartiles and, you know, with some quart. I mean, sure, I'd love the, I'd love the bottom, the bottom quartile and the 75% and the, the mean and the median. And that would be better, but I wanted to start somewhere and be, be reasonable. And I really got my uh, head bitten off by a former board member for asking, I started pushing too far beyond the average um, one time. So um, yeah, I would, I would love an actual, I, I mean, what, what concerns me more is that that's not the, you know, the, the driving question would be, should be, how is this, what is this gonna do to the average member? Because we're gonna have to make difficult decisions about, about pay and so forth. And those might be, and although there isn't a, what we used, what we used to have, uh, what we used to have before this was destroyed in the state of Wisconsin, is we had uh, an imperfect system, but a system that considered the value of, of benefits. And you had, you had apples to apples, right? And then that was destroyed and it was actually, uh, it was actually made illegal to, to use. Uh, although you can still look. And so that's what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is essentially look. And if this is something which, you know, is going to increase, is gonna increase the average family or increase, you know, most families are just gonna take 70% of uh, make 22% of people max the family out of pocket instead of 8% of people max the family. That is, that's relevant to whether I'm gonna be able to vote yes on this or not, so.
I think it's probably pretty good. I mean, it, it probably is pretty good. I just need to know a little bit more and it's a question I've asked for you.
I have that information and I'll get it to you in follow-up. I apologize for not understanding your question.
Can you share that with all of us when it comes in? Thank you.
Hey, is there anything else? The very last slide of the presentation, we just talked a little bit about communication strategy and what next steps would be. But before we talk about that, I'd like to give the other folks at the table an opportunity to weigh in if there's anything, you know, that you'd like to share about your experience having worked with us through these recommendations or anything else that uh, you want to start with.
There you go. Thank you. Tell how often I'm here. Uh, to your point around cost, et cetera, I can tell you, for example, between uh, January 4th and February 1st, we had 12 meetings specifically around this issue, not just BAC, but one-on-one, small group, individual uh, with other unions, with AFSMI, our own executive board, et cetera. And back in M3, we're very uh, receptive to what we had to say, the district. And there were very difficult conversations, I think, uh, that whole sausage making process, if you will. And one of my frustrations with this, and all of you are aware of this, and it's not with process, it's not with collaboration or lack thereof, is with the fact that there is a $7 billion surplus at the state level. And the fact that our state legislature uh, has not acted upon that, has not fully funded public education. And therefore, we are sitting for three months in all of these meetings, trying to figure out a way to address the needs of the fiscal cliff. And which, by the way, that whole conversation was impacted by the new rates that came in. Because we were looking at amongst these 12 different plans of hoping to save five or six million dollars. And we're only saving two. And that was frustrating. And then it made this conversation around what do we do frankly moot? Because we couldn't keep even ethically or financially offering the traditional 500 plan because of the amount of premiums it would cost just to even help pay for that 500 plan. If that makes sense, because it's not paying for itself in that sense. So there was a ton of work that was put into this. And we too wish we were not in this situation, but I would say that we are coming together to say this is the best option that we could come up with collectively. With members of the BAC from different groups, members, non-members, admin, et cetera, with members of the union and our work with, with HR and others, this is the best that we could come up with. And I appreciate you acknowledging that because I am frustrated with that inability to have that, you know, uh, that conversation, frankly, inability just to bargain as we used to be able to in that sense. So I hope that helps. You know, from our perspective, uh, we have, we have done the work and this is the best that we can do. We appreciate. I know this came up at the last minute, the 30% issue, for example, that was something that you're in the midst of all these numbers and all these different options. And until you bring it to members and they can actually share with you, this is costing me per month 15,000, it doesn't hit you until you have that piece. So again, thank you for the, for being a quick on the answer and the solution to that as well. Now, of course, I can't turn it off.
So where did the prudent RX come from? Good question. Prudent RX is a program that CVS Caremark uses and has available to groups who are willing to put it in place. It can only be put in place with at least 30% coinsurance. So we are recommending that we put it in place at the lowest level of coinsurance possible, knowing that folks who enroll in the prudent RX program will experience zero cost share. But those who choose not to enroll, for whatever reason, if they don't enroll, then they will experience the 30% coinsurance because the district then is not able to take advantage of those manufacturer assistance programs.
And I assume that the marketing and publicity of that, while they'll get mailers from the CO RX or whatever the program is called with it, the groups at this table will continue to educate members and employees on that. And the, the true cost with this and the benefits of how it plays into both of our insurance and prescription costs and the big picture with it, as you can see this collaboration is taking place already, we'll continue with that messaging for our employees.
Brian, there, there actually will be information going out tomorrow um, to employees that will have um, information regarding prudent RX. And, and the next step for us is, is clearly the, the communication piece. We already have implemented some strategies of what a planning for that might look like. Our meeting on Wednesday night with the Benefit Advisory Committee is gonna focus solely upon creating a marketing communication plan in person, onsite, virtual webinars, um, one-to-ones if they want to come in and meet with us. But that's gonna be the sole purpose of our conversation Wednesday. So when we have an opportunity to come back and the board has a chance to, to make a decision on this, we have two to three tiers that we have to look at from a communication standpoint. We have to get to open enrollment first, alright? In May, we're gonna be going to open enrollment. We have a lot of education between February 27th and May 1st or May 2nd. Then we're gonna have that window of time in there where all of a sudden now I'm enrolled in that plan and I, I start doing it on July 1st. And I don't understand what an HRA works, how it works, what I need to do on it. We have that education piece. Then we have those employees who don't return to work again until end of August and September. It won't probably even have used the plan potentially. So we're gonna have to look at what kind of a communication strategy we might have to implement when we get into the start of the school year as well. So we, we will absolutely be working together to come up with that communication plan.
To piggyback real quickly too, I think the BAC has been vocal from uh, the onset of this work around the education piece, and I know the GBEA and AFSMI, I don't want to speak for you Ben, sorry, but we've talked about this in one-on-one conversations about working together with members and helping them understand that they have they have to be a part of the process too. And we're going to be encouraging them to go into these sessions and asking questions. Because otherwise, it will cost you money if you choose not to do the work. And yes, there is extra work in doing this and I get it. It, it, it will take more time, you will have to pay more attention, but it's to your benefit and it's to the plan's benefit in that sense too. And I'm probably getting ahead of this, but they've also emphasized, they being BAC, that a wellness component going forward. And there's a real interest in that piece in helping members uh, not only to become um, more knowledgeable, but also maybe helping to make good choices too in terms of lifestyle, et cetera.
I don't have a question as much as I just have a, a comment. First of all, we don't, I, I, I would like to see our union folks here even more often, like it's, feels like it's been a really long time. And notwithstanding your steeler stuff that you're wearing, it's good to see you, David.
Notwithstanding your steeler stuff that you're wearing, it's good to see you, David. Um, I've I'm really. Uh, proud that our district still cares about the the voice of the union members. Um, that represent uh hundreds of people that work for our district. And um, and I see, I know that this represents months and months of work. Difficult, arduous work. And so I just want to congratulate you all to getting us to this point. And I know there's other people, I know I'm looking at you, Melissa Field Collar. Um, that have have um. Committed enormous amount of time and energy to get us here. Um, the the goal is always to get to be able to give the best that we can to our. To our employees. Um, it's a it's a huge part of of keeping our staff healthy and their families as well. So that is our commitment and I'm I'm just really gratified that we can do this. This is a good thing. Um, and I I'm I'm hoping that when we go, we get to the point where. We vote on it, that um everyone will leave the table. Comfortable with the decision, maybe not amazingly happy about it, but comfortable that we've 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 compromised. And um. And found the best solution possible, like you said, Dave. Thanks.
I just, I want to be comfortable and I. I am comfortable with this as far as when. We have employees that will be emailing the board on this because this is a significant change. Um, and to thank you and and to reiterate. The collaboration that took place with all of these groups. So when. We get emails, we can. Share with them that there is a plan coming forward. There's been collaboration between all the vested groups on it. Um. So we've got that message that can be shared with them and the and the education parts coming collaboratively as well with it. Um, so, thank you. So I do, I do want, I would be remiss in not giving uh credit where it's due as well, and as someone who's had. Very, very hard questions about about benefits since um. Since act ten, at least. Um, I also want to say that this this prudent RX. This prudent RX thing is. Probably the, probably the best idea I've I have ever seen. And so that, that's a big deal, right? That is moving. That is. That is examining what is. Very. Special about healthcare pricing in America and finding a way that it. Goes on to manufacturers and goes off of. Green Bay taxpayers and. Being a part of that. Being a part of that money instead of being not a part of that money is a is a good um. Is a good thing.
Quickly, we. Is there any information associated with the fifteen hundred dollar HRA plan around how stable the population is? Right? Because this is a big change for those five hundred dollar deductible people to move to an HRA where you do have to participate. Um, in uh the the payment cycle of of healthcare. Um, do you see a stable population who elect the plan and then reelect the plan the next year? Or do you see some people go, I'm done with this, right? And I I want to go back to the five hundred dollar plan?
That's a great question. So the way that the plan was put in place by the district, folks who go to the higher deductible cannot go back to the lower deductible. But. We also, though, have really great anecdotal feedback from folks who tell us stories about procedures that they've had done. Um, Melissa, you can help me, but a shoulder. A rotator cuff and a knee replacement and and paid nothing out of pocket because of. Um, having you had the health reimbursement arrangement with the rollover dollars from a previous year. Earning the incentive dollars that are there to take advantage of the preventive care. That's no cost on the health plan or on the dental plan. Um, there are ways for folks to supplement what's in their health reimbursement arrangement. Yes, they do have to file for reimbursement, but. We consistently hear from people about how they've not had to pay because they've. Used wisely when they were able and then had those funds available when they needed them.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Yeah, this was a lot and but.
I promise the next topic won't be as long.
Introduce, oh.
Uh, the next topic is language on reduction in force, and I want to begin before I turn it over to the team to say that. Our hope is to never have to use this. Our hope over the next couple of months is to make some decisions that will impact and address the budget deficit in ways that wouldn't result in having to lay off staff. That is our goal. At the same time, when we looked at the language, it was very vague. And. I didn't feel comfortable if we ever have to implement this. Um. Being able to do it accurately because everybody could have interpreted it in different ways. So I. Again, I thank this group for taking the time to look through this. I think it benefits everybody. Please.
Much like the um last agenda topic, this topic is also the product of. Some significant collaboration. Uh, instead of a BAC, we have a employee handbook committee. The cover memo that we provided to you detailed the extent of the collaboration and the number of meetings. That we we had. Uh, in the end, um, it turned out that having forty people sit in a room and try and write. Handbook language is probably not the easiest thing to do. So we regrouped and that's part of the sausage making process, right? Uh, we regrouped and said, okay, let's just put a fewer heads together and get language on paper, and then let's bring it back to the bigger group to get feedback and reactions. And that's what we ended up doing. So it took us a little bit longer, but I think we've got a process uh pretty pretty well worked out. Uh, again, difficult conversations. Um. Didn't always agree, but I think the discourse was good and challenged everybody's thinking in in all ways. And instead of a few paragraphs, we now have a few pages in front of you. That very specifically details out what a reduction in force would look like. As Vicky said, we're hoping never to use it. Um, we're hoping because of the. Large size of the district to our benefit that we'll be able to absorb. Uh, any reductions through attrition, but should we have to do some reductions in force? This is the language and we wanted to be respectful for employees so they understood what that looked like. And be able to put a process in place. So if it comes to that point, no one has questions. So again, thanks to the gentleman sitting to my right that. Put up with us in various uh virtual meetings as we crafted language for hours.
The biggest thing on this is just to have it be objective. And not subjective because the there was only a few paragraphs before in the handbook. And there was a lot of subjectivity that could have been interpreted that way. So we knew that was not going to be a win-win. And so looking at that, just like Vicky said, we're just not comfortable. Having that be in there. So when we looked at the handbook as a whole, we knew this was a topic that would be. You know, you have to nail this one, right? You have to really make sure that you've got objective language. And so we really, so now it's five and a half pages instead of a couple paragraphs. But that way every um employee group is also identified as to how, because there is variation within. The groups and it was great conversation for those who have been the district for a hundred years. Remember back to whatever and many conversations of pulling up an old. Select a bargaining agreement in different colored pamphlets and looking at what this was before was really helpful just to have that history as well.
Are there any questions? Andrew?
Uh, thank you. Okay, so. Um. I go back a long way on this one, too. Um. I guess. My concern is. Um. And maybe you can just, maybe you can just break it down into. You know, into lay language here. What, uh, other than the fact that the soup, other than the fact that if you go, if there were to be a layoff and you were to go outside of. Years of service has to be signed off on, you know, specifically by the superintendent. Uh, I would prefer to take that a step forward and require a board vote to lay anyone off outside of years of service as well. Um. What, what it looks to me like is we have, we have. We're focused on attrition, which is good, and the large size of the district allows for that to happen. Great. And then we have. Voluntary, we're going to offer voluntary before we lay anyone off, and that's that's great. Um, and other places might not have as much of this voluntary, but then. Step three. Well, I believe that the people who are in there, at least that the people in their seats right now would do this as pretty much a year of years of service basis. Because that's the one object truly objective, truly objective thing. It really says that the district can do. Uh, I would think that somewhat that many people could have some way that they might fit into one of the categories. And I don't know who's going to be here when this might happen. It's not about. This superintendent, it's not about this legal department, right? It's. You have to write policy language and handbook language that makes. Makes sense for whoever's going to be here. So.
I I'll start and others can um offer. So. We we talked about this extensively, and I think, Andrew, if you look at. Step one for the, I'm starting on page four, for every single group of employees. The language says. You identify the position with the least amount of years of service for reduction in the department or school, and then reductions will be made on those years of service. So long as the reductions are consistent with the operational needs of the district. So if if we need to reduce a. A a teacher, we start with the the group of individuals who are certified under. Uh, one eighteen twenty-two, who have a teacher contract, who have a a license. But if if the, uh, suddenly we decide and I I'm just going to pick, I'm going to pick an imaginary topic so I don't. Freak anybody out who's who's watching, but let's say we get rid of Latin. And um, we need to lay off a Latin teacher. Well, if the least senior person in the teacher unit is. A first grade teacher, we're not going to lay off a first grade teacher because that person doesn't teach Latin. So we would have to focus on what are the operational needs of the district. And we also talked about, there's language in here that talks about reducing the level of disruptions. So if we can pinpoint where we can shift people around and you may be licensed in something that. Um. That you haven't taught in a few years, but you're able and you're capable of doing it, we may shift people around so as to avoid those layoffs. But again, it's working with the employees and it talks about um working with with the administration and the employees to avoid the layoffs. And so that we have as little disruption as possible. And that's for every single group, for paraprofessionals, for our clerical, for uh our. Facility staff that we would look at where can we minimize the disruptions and. Reduce the the positions but not potentially reduce staff.
But then why are the, what, I guess, I mean, yes, if you look at, if you look at the the steps, I can see where that would follow, that those steps would be. Years of years of service based. But then. Why under step three? Does it say the district? It seems to me the district may, the district still may select. Like if the district may select the employee for reduction based on operational needs of the district personnel qualifications, discipline and years of service. What, what is there that prevents? A future. Superintendent from saying, ah. I'm gonna. I'm going to focus a lot on. Who has a write-up among people with relatively low-ish years of service, like it, because it's, it says there, like, that's what I'm. It says where you were pointing out about teachers, it says something that's a very heavily. Years of service driven kind of thing. But it looks to me like step three, these aren't numbered, they're not ordered, they're not, there are, right, there are four. Criteria that the district may select based on. So that's what I'm trying to. Understand.
So if you, if. We couldn't call out every single employee group. So there will be positions that don't fall in. Every single one of these employee groups. Where that general language is going to apply, but if you, but that's the general language and then. The specific language applies those general criteria and and essentially sets forth the. Procedures of how to effectuate. That language. So I think you could um think of the. The information on page three as essentially the policy. And then language on page four, five, six, seven. And eight is the procedure of how you implement that policy.
So I get that, but then why would we have a policy written like way more broadly than? What we're going to do.
Because we have four thousand employees. So we we start with the general and then we specify it. For for the groups and for those groups that. Are not specific groups, you know, there there's. There's one Melissa, there's one legal counsel, and so there's going to be some general language. Of how you would effectuate layoffs of of people who don't fall in these groups.
So people who don't fall in the groups are the ones that might be at some. Theoretical risk of. Of 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 a future superintendent not. Being as concerned about years of service. Although otherwise, why would the, otherwise, why would the policy not have, would the? Why would the page? Um. Three-part not have. At least at a minimum had. Years of service first on the list instead of at the bottom of the list, if not first on a numbered list.
It is first in the criteria.
All right, page one, then why is it fourth on page? Page one.
That's the current language.
That's the current.
That we don't want. So page one is just says the current handbook language. So one and two down to the. Like two-thirds of the way down, and then the proposed language just starts at the bottom of page two.
I am so sorry. It's late and you. I haven't been able to say this too many times before, but you. You got rid of almost all of what I hated and forced me to, and I was forced to vote no on this. I felt forced to vote no on this several times. So, okay. So. All right.
Okay, so that's why we changed it.
I just want to thank you for the, can you hear me? You're right there, but um. Thank you. I'll use my teacher voice. Um, especially. With the spec, the specific language with non-renewal and making sure that that was in there. I've talked to teachers in other districts who have gone through smaller districts who have gone through layoffs and have had that. That box checkmarked and have had to go in and fight it and to make sure that this is. Part of the policy. I want to thank you and if there's anyone still watching and if there's any candidates for openings that we have. Once again, this is the collaboration that has taken place in this district. And we hope continues to go forward with it. So, thank you.
Okay, the last agenda item is board member compensation. Vicky, is that going to be you?
Is actually, and yeah, you have two more. Nice try. Um.
Sorry. Yeah, we have two more.
Several years ago, the board voted to link uh board compensation to CPI, and it made sense at that time. It did because CPI was around one to two percent. Uh, today it's at eight percent. Our recommendation is to align board compensation with other employee groups. Uh, in addition, we recommend that the timing of the adjustment for board compensation align with our other employees. So instead of May one, we would shift that to July one.
So if I can just offer, the, the history of the motion the board made a few years ago was that your policy one sixty-four says your salary has to be reviewed annually in April. It was an uncomfortable topic. No one wants to talk about giving themselves a raise. As Vicky said, the CPI was so low that, um, at the time Pete Ross made the recommendation, just tie it to CPI and, and be done with it and, and then you don't have to continually have to have this conversation. But here we are with eight percent CPI. And as Angie has discovered, the timing of that increase in April is very difficult for budgetary purposes and it does not align to the CPI increase for employees as well. So that's how we got here. The, the other option is you can just get rid of that language altogether in your policy and just say you, that upon board motion, you can review your salary and, and then there's no automatic increase either.
Laura? I do have some recollection when we went through this a few years ago, that it hadn't been addressed in like twenty years, literally. The school board members hadn't had any kind of increase in their stipend. It's not really a salary. Technically, I believe it's actually a stipend to, it's supposed, it's there to reimburse you for the cost of your service, basically, um, childcare, gas, whatever. Um, and, and so we did, uh, over the course of two years, increase it to kind of bring it into line with other districts, um. And I, so I think this makes a lot of sense to, to, um, bring it into the same cycle as other salaries, um, that are, that salaries that people get in our district. However, I would like to propose that we, for at least this year, freeze, freeze our, our stipend and keep it the way it is. Um, considering all the things that we're facing as a district and our employees are facing and families in this community are facing, um, it would be my strong recommendation, um, that we, that we, um, do that for the next year. So.
So are you proposing Melissa's suggestion that you remove that verbiage from the policy?
I would like to do as you recommend. But how do we get to, um, the, where we can, for the, the next twelve months? Go ahead.
So I think what the, the motion could be is that you modify the language in one sixty-four at the next meeting to have it be tied to the administrator increase and at that time, but also include language that, uh, the board can add and annually then vote to, um, not award that increase at a properly noticed meeting. So it'd be a two-step process. Change your, we can do it actually in the same night. Change the language in policy one sixty-four and then the next motion would be that for purposes of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the board would not, um, have an increase in your stipend for that fiscal year.
Can you write that up for us for our meeting?
I already have it done.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. I, I mean, I don't know how other board members feel about this, so, um, but I, I, I feel like this would be important. So, anyway.
Cause to me, to me, the important thing about this, well, there, there are two things. First of all, I think if it, if we, we were board members were way out of whack compared to if, if you look at, um, you know, there are, the district has a hundred sixty thousand residents with only seven board reps. That's a, that's a twenty, twenty-some thousand to one ratio. Much, much higher than city council members who get a higher stipend. A much, much higher representation ratio than county board members. And at the time, at the time, it wasn't, it wasn't even remotely close. It was well under half of what local government bodies of, I would argue similar amounts of work have. And so we got there and I think there was, um, I, I seem to recall just a placeholder of let's throw something in there for the, for the ongoing, so to help it not be another difficult conversation in, in fourteen years after this ended, but I would be okay with it being none here. Um, I think, and it's, you know, it's a re- relatively trivial amount of, it's, it's not a significant amount of money. It's the getting caught up to here that was important. So.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I just would not want to tie the hands of a board three years from now by having some policy that we've set or, you know, adaptation to it that changes the board's ability to do so in future boards. So I'm assuming the language will get that intent. So, thank you.
So at, this doesn't impact me. So this is an easy thing for me to talk, an easier thing for me to talk about and, um, I, I understand absolutely where the budget is. I am not here for the money. I am, I know, I, I, shocking. I am very, very privileged in that, um, I am able to be here and I am not dependent on the money. I do think it is important that the board is fairly compensated because there will be members who will need this money in order to pay for childcare. They will need it for transportation. And if we don't want the board to be a board of all people who are affluent and can afford to do this without being reliant on that, um, I do think it is important that the board is fairly compensated. This is hard work. Like I said, it doesn't make a difference to me. I won't be here. So, um, but I do think it's really, really important that the board stays current. Um, city council right now makes over ten thousand dollars a year. And that is, I think three thousand dollars more than the board makes. Um, I do think it is important if we want to have a diverse board um, and make being a board member available to, you know, people in all economic statuses, it is important that we are fairly compen- that you all are fairly compensated. So, um, yeah, I just, that's my two cents. I know you all work hard and I want to make sure if you, I think it's important, it, it's not something you want to talk about. I do think it's important to have something in there that you look at yearly compensations and you have that conversation because I do think it's important that you are fairly compensated.
I, I would agree with you. I just wanted to hit the pause for one year. That's all.
One other thing that a board member can do, and I can bring this with the change to the policy, you can also refuse your salary, but there's a very specific time of when you can refuse your salary. So, uh, WSB has an exhibit that we can include as part of policy one sixty-four that will be right in there that a board member could just fill out that form letter and then refuse the salary during that specific time. And then you're not compensated for that year i- if that is what a board member chooses to do along the lines of, of what I've heard tonight.
That's the first time I've heard of that. Is that a new thing? No?
It, no, but WSB has it in all your materials. I don't think it's widely disseminated, but WSB does provide that to board members.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned about that. I, and I, I know, I know who was in charge of the legislature when they s- I know they specifically put something into statute about doing it. And I guess I, I'm a little concerned that if we go certainly, certainly someone, uh, who has the means to, to do that is welcome to do that. If someone asked my opinion about how to do it, I would say I would, mi- might I offer that instead of just refusing it, you could direct it to the program of your choice within our district or to whatever of your, your choice. Um, I, I think it creates, I don't know, putting it in there creates possibilities for misunderstanding if someone's reading it or it creates the, there's just something not quite right about it. It puts, puts the idea out right up in front of you, but you don't have to take it. Then you s- does someone who's considering running start wondering, oh, am I not really, is that what you're supposed to do? You know, it's, it's subtle, but I think, you know, if someone wants to run and, um, and donate their money, that's, that's fine. I just don't know if I want to put it in a board policy statement. Cause someone who's not on the board might misunderstand that.
Okay. Go ahead, Yuri. Are there any other comments?
Okay, great. Now we are on the last agenda item and I hope Josh is going to make it snappy. We have our, we have our facility and referendum updates. Yeah.
Thanks, Josh.
Well, the most recent updates, um, you should know from your votes earlier today and that's that we are, are going to be hiring some architectural and design services for East and West High School. Um, we have been meeting with Rettler Corporation, which won the, um, the bids for the athletic field surfaces and stadiums, stadia. Um, and we've had some really good, um, conversations with them. We just went over the mechanical, electrical and plumbing for um, the Southwest baseball field, which will also be a softball field, um, by the way. Um, and also the Preble field. Um, as I've shared, I believe I've shared this with the board already, but, um, in case I haven't, um, shared it widely with the public, the Prebles situation with field is such that we can build inside out, meaning that we can do the field and the track this summer, have a fall athletic season and then finish the grandstands, the press box and all that stuff after the, after the, um, athletic season with West High School, um, that is not going to be a possibility because we have to change the dimensions of the track. Um, we have to kind of squish the track to widen the field. Um, now we are able to get that field two hundred and ten feet wide, which is going to be about fifteen feet wider than, than Prebles. Um, I, I do believe that, uh, given what we're able to work with there at West, that we will end up, um, with probably the nicest field in the greater Green Bay area, um, when, when it gets done. But, um, it is unfortunately on a, a different, uh, on a different timeline due, due to those engineering challenges. There should not be a problem getting the field done at Southwest, um, this summer. Did you, did you have a question about fields?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that'll give West the opportunity, I would assume, to host events for the WIA for regional events or just by the, the quality of the track and the quality of the field and get some of those big events into that area then, correct? Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's the idea. Um, actually with all of these fields, we want to make sure that we are, our facilities are able to host, um, you know, those big events. Um, Southwest, in addition to having that, that baseball and softball field, um, this summer will also have their roof done, which you've already voted on, their tennis courts done, which you have already voted on. Um, we, we will be seeing, um, some, you'll be seeing another, uh, design and, and engineering services, um, RFP probably at the next board meeting. That's, um, Prebles, which includes the auditorium and, um, the commons expansion there at Preble. Um, other than that, we're, we're getting close to finishing up having all of our design RFPs. The next round of RFPs are when we actually bid out the construction services based on, on the designs that have been created. So, you're not rid of me just yet. Um, I guess any questions on referendum projects?
So I just want to make sure I, I understand the field at Preble wouldn't, was not large enough to host soccer, WIA soccer. Is that correct?
Um, that is correct. Now we are able to get it just barely that, that size. Um, but it's pretty landlocked, so you can't really expand that field given the, the situation over there at Preble.
So you fix the culvert at the edge of the field that where drains up. Okay, so that, you're able to get that soccer field wi- within the dimensions of the track and that's the difference between Preble and West, right? So you have to rip everything out for West to expand and you don't. Okay. Thank you.
Let me just send the task force.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, so Facilities Task Force has been meeting. Um, they just met for the third time here at District Office after, um, spending some time at Barrett Elementary School in their first meeting and Eisenhower Elementary School at their second meeting. Um, those meetings are open to the public. I know several board members have popped, um, in and out of of these task force meetings. The, the goal is to have a recommendation to the board, um, by May, uh, for the board to take action in May to, to set the course, um. Ultimately, for the, the next probably several decades, uh, for the district. Um, they are considering all manner of things. Um, I think in, in the the, um, the consultants that we're working with did a good job of providing, uh, they call them schemas, but they're kind of like potential scenarios that, um, that are designed to spark good conversation. And, and in that, in those schemas, those, those five schemas, I think just about, I think literally every school building had kids coming or going. So, um, there will be a lot of hard work by that, by that committee. Um, going forward, our next meeting is next Wednesday. Um, he- here again at DOB in room one thirty-eight. So, um, invite members of the board to come and observe that. I invite the public to, to come and ob- observe that work there. Um, one thing I know that is on the, the docket here is, um, is, as a board coming up with some guiding principles to help direct the, um, that group. Now that is, that is something actually that the, that a couple of group members in the last, uh, in the last meeting independently said that they want, they said, okay, so what, you know, what's the plan here? Is it chop, chop, chop? Or, you know, wh- what are, what are the boundaries and what are we expected to do? I know that that task force is taking, um, their jobs very seriously. Um, and they expect it, um, expect at the end to have something for you to take action on that is meaningful. Um, I know that there, there'd been a feeling among some task force members that had previously served on some task forces that, um, we don't always get that out of task forces here. Um, but, uh, I, I fully expect to have a, a good and thoughtful um, recommendation for the board by May. But they would like some, some directions so they know what their, what their charge is. They broadly, they broadly know, but they, um, they would like some guardrails. So I'm, I'm glad that the board is talking about that today.
Um, so James has worked on this and I had gotten lots of feedback and I think he should, you know, you're the person who's kind of done the most on this. So why don't you go ahead and, and kind of talk about what you've come up with?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I want to start with some changes that, um, you know, I, I published this and I requested feedback from everybody and either I talked to you in person or, um, for people who provided fe- written, um, feedback, um, and I worked with Josh and, um, members of the district, um, to craft this. And then, uh, we did share it with the facilitators to make sure it's feasible and make sure that their mandate paired well with these, uh, guardrails. And there's one obvious um, item that was removed in the aligning the, um, the guidance with the initiative to be carbon neutral by twenty fifty was removed because they're not going to take on the nature of the facility. Because they're not going to take on the nature of the facilities, right? And the nature of the improvements that will be for architecture, and they noted it and may show up again in some guidance to architectural firms. But they didn't have the means to act on that, so it was not good guidance. Everything else, um, they changed some wording, um, but you know, they didn't fun- fundamentally change. Any of the other guardrails um, through their review. So we end up with something, and I just mentally reformatted this as a rubric. And it said, if we came up with some sort of rating average where these dimensions of an evaluation make sense to me. Uh, and so I put it to um, the board to determine if um, that, you know, that um, resonates with you as well. The goal to be not to constrain them, to allow them to do their work, make their decisions, whatever. But then be as successful as possible in their presentation to the board, uh, to the the feedback last week. Um, because they've kind of, they know what our um, our um, evaluation criteria is going to be. Now, this is not, this doesn't have to be our entire evaluation criteria. But again, as uh, as a framework or a set of guardrails, you know, it aligns with strategic um, objectives. To um, reduce our operational footprint, right? And turn that into tangible savings and in fund ten, right? And it does require a a equitable dispersment of value across the district. And not focus on one hemisphere or the other of Green Bay, right? Um, and um, you know, to to be sensitive to both our ongoing um, referendum spend. Where that will be, you know, is obviously allocated to certain schools. Um, and um, to make sure that any boundaries. And I I hear that most of the recommendation, that's that's really the big one, right? Is, you know, the concept of minimum change is going to be really hard, given the the schemas and and the the thought starters that they're working with. And but I think it's important to everyone, you know, to disrupt uh, their parents and students the least um, throughout this work. So I've gone over this document dozens of times. Um, I I feel comfortable with it, but I am open to any suggestions. Now, I it's my understanding that all we intend to do as a board is to agree. That we can make this available to our facilitators for presentation. Um, that board action and adopting this as an evaluation criteria is not the intent. Um, it really is just a communication that we provide the facilitators to incorporate into the next session.
Okay, so I guess first of all, I was, I would never have proposed that we lock ourselves into something like this. As a as a formal evaluation criteria. But my argument, it's a it's a boring technical argument you've heard me make for twenty, twenty-four years. Except for two of them, uh, twenty-five years, except for two of them, I don't know, um. Yeah, well, I don't, I don't, there's only one plaque though, so um, I don't have the same plaque. So anyways, the um. I'm gonna maintain, and it's a technical point, but if we don't move this forward and vote on it, that we didn't do anything. That we just moved uh, moved air through our lungs and talked about a well-written document. And I understand that we want them to see it before two weeks from now. And I I what, I I thought we should have probably had this be voted on. But I I believe that, and I maintain that regardless, even if it might not have any real serious impact on what happens. I think voting next week or voting next time versus not voting next time does make a technical difference between we we did something. Or we didn't do something. That's not the most important question I have about this, but I think it's it's, I think it's relevant.
As we look at this, these are great opportunities that you don't have come up with it. We also have to keep in mind, this is our once in a generation opportunity to make some significant improvements within the district. And this is an opportunity that, for instance, start times, if it's something that we can utilize now as we're redesigning the district. That may cause an issue with transportation, but it's the opportunity to make those corrections now. So, you know, recognizing, this is kind of our one shot at it. And and the task force recognizing those opportunities as well, you know, a lot of us have expressed our priorities. While we were either running or throughout conversations taking place during these board meetings, which I'm hoping the task force is kind of reading. The tea leaves on this as well, so.
So two things, one, Andrew, I'm not opposed to a board action. If sharing this document and presentation to the the committee can precede board action. If you just want to firm it up, so that as we go forward, it'll be on record that this was delivered. Because of just timing, right? Okay.
Yeah, we we do, we issue contracts to people and they sign them pending of official board vote in two weeks. Yeah, that's fine.
And then, second, I I agree with you, Brian, and that's why I I view this as in my head as a rubric. Because you don't have to be successful in meeting all of these. It's the plan that meets most of them, right? It makes the most sense and it grades out um, when compared to other options, right? So I do think it is in how it is presented to the task force that is very, very important. That they don't see this in in several conversations with you. As guidelines and as an order from the board, right? It's not direction, it's here's some criteria that we are very sensitive to and align with other goals and problem sets that we're dealing with.
Okay, I I think, uh, and I I like the, you know, what we would, we wouldn't be voting on us, we would be voting on. Requesting the task force to consider the following, and I think that's the right balance, obviously. Obviously, it's stronger than, hey, it might be kind of nice if you did, because we took the time to to vote on it. But it does not say that it's a binding, don't give us a plan that doesn't hit these. I'm I'm a little, I I'm a little worried about, you know, ten percent, is that, you know, is that today's dollars? Are we supposed to be ten percent below what we are today, even with the years of inflation coming in? But I think what what I'm more concerned about, and I'll save my time for this, I think. When we say optimal capacity, I I guess I'm more interested in yours, Josh. Than I am in in ATS and R. Uh, ATS and R has a certain way of doing things that makes sense for being apples to apples. But one huge thing is that they don't include any AGR, right? And now I know why they don't, and from an initial high level starting point, that's okay. But if they. There are a couple hundred, eh, there are a couple hundred capacity that don't exist on each side because of AGR. We just don't know where it is yet, but right now they're all written up as not having any AGR. They're all twenty-five, right? So, that makes sense?
Yeah, I think it goes beyond AGR. They haven't taken into account programmatic uh, considerations. And there will be programmatic implications to the task force work as well. But I I understand you loud and clear that we would, we would be sizing the classrooms appropriate. For the programs that the classrooms are serving.
So how do we know that, I guess, you were gonna do yours and not the, not the much rougher twenty-five? I mean, do we have to specify that? I mean, do we have to specify optimal capacity according to Josh's projection?
Yeah, I mean, optimal capacity according to the the programs that the board has authorized. Um, but that is kind of the the next step in in this process is. We're, we've taken a look at the the buildings as. You know, things made out of wood and bricks. And now, you know, as we start to look at these schemas, we take a look at what's going on inside of those buildings.
Part of, part of why there's only a hundred sixty-nine kids in tank is that. There weren't enough uh, babies in that area between X and Y number of years ago. Another part of it, though, is that's an AGR school and we have some smaller class sizes intentional, right? Both both of those are true.
I think it's true that the class sizes there are small because it's an AGR school, the overall enrollment. Okay.
When it, yet you still have to in the first stage, I get why they do twenty-five, because if if hypothetically. I can't even speculate something that's so impossible that people won't start talking about it. But if something went in that did have twenty-five people in a classroom into that building, maybe that's okay. But then somewhere else would have AGR class, right? So that tank's real capacity isn't three twenty-five is what I meant. I just got to it in a long way.
So in your feedback to me, we had this conversation, and I took it to heart. What I did, and the reason why I didn't modify that statement, is in number one, I call out specific. The specifically the ATS R methodology. Uh, I'm silent everywhere else. Because I've delegated the, you know, the operations of the district to the district, right? So I would say if I'm silent on it being ATS R, because we just don't have a methodology to grade schools. That we can pull off the shelf and say, here, this is the definition of good, medium, you know, and bad, they do, right? But we size our schools and we determine optimal capacity a- as part of operating our schools. So I would assume that the definition would be that of the district's optimal capacity.
Anything else?
Just to clarify then, uh, our direction is to bring this to the task force next week and it's pending board vote. But just so they have the information.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
That was snappy. That concludes the operations.
Okay, thank you, Don. Okay, um, let's wrap this up. Um, there's nothing under policy and governance. And um, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having. By calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five. Or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.